Are the most important, the essence of that home and land.
Yep.
Like your pots that your husband made.
Oh fabulous Chantel. Beautiful. Let me just see your face.
See this tree is holding me. This tree has its power, doesn't it?
It does.
I mean, look at it. It's going to survive. Chantel is here. Look! Welcome to my home.
I think we are going to be friends.
Oh, we already are.
Yeah, we are, but now we're gonna know one another. And we're gonna stick around.
We are?
Yes.
All right. I will go, I'll go the distance if you will.
Sit down, sit down. Yes, I will.
I am so happy. Do you believe this? Do you believe this?
We're all together.
I don't wait.
You can all share a great vision for the future.
I was walking around your place, seeing all of the art.
Yep, yep.
All of the art that is gone.
Yes.
And that was so beloved in our families.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that we didn't... There was, the fire took that part of us.
The LCPA serves to memorialize the permitted short-term rental uses specified in the ZTA. The details of the STR permitting regulations are not included in the LCPA, to allow for them to be adjusted from time to time as needed, without having to get a certification by the Coastal Commission. Coastal Commission staff provide a brief preliminary comments on the LCPA today. At this time, staff has not had a chance to get more detail, so we don't know if they may have more comments later. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. Next slide, please. Planning Director Bonnie Blue, City Attorney Trevor Russen, and Associate Planner Justin Kendall are all here as well and are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Elizabeth. Kathleen?
Yes.
How many, how many people do we have signed up to participate?
We have 26.
Twenty-six. Gentlemen, I think it's probably the best way to proceed is to open the public hearing. Let's get, I know we've all got a lot of questions about this, but let's get the public to have a chance to speak and then we'll get an opportunity to go over our questions and our comments when we, when we return to the commission table. So Kathleen, who's the first? I'm sorry, Chris.
Just one favor. I know we've had a lot of correspondence, so I would ask whoever is going to speak if they could just let us know if they submitted anything so we can try to bring it up for reference. I know it would help me if that wouldn't be too much of a trouble. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up, under the sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please ensure you visit MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda, Kathleen?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on July 16th, 2020.
Okay, that brings us to item 1A, which is Local Coastal Program Amendment Number 19-003 and Zone Text Amendment Number 19-005. We have a staff report, please. No public comment?
Liz is going to do the staff report for us, and I think she's just getting all set up.
Yeah. Hello, good evening Chair Jennings and the Honorable Members of the Malibu Planning Commission. The draft Local Coastal Program Amendment and Zoning Text Amendment before you tonight is the culmination of years of legislative review on behalf of the Planning Commission, the RACES, and the City Council to regulate the short-term rental of residential property, defined 30 days or less, and address the impacts of short-term rentals on neighborhood character and provide a mechanism to prohibit nuisance rentals. Next slide, please. On December 3rd, 2019, the Council adopted Resolution 1953 to initiate this Local Coastal Program Amendment and ZTA and directed staff to incorporate aspects of the City of Santa Monica's Home Sharing and Vacation Rental Ordinance that was adopted in September 2019, a key feature of which is the requirement that a host lives in the dwelling unit that is being rented. Council also identified certain provisions for inclusion that address conditions unique to Malibu, most notably in regards to hosting requirements and multifamily short-term rentals. The Council directed that the ordinance require that a host lives on-site at the property during the rental, but the ordinance need not require that the host live within the rented dwelling unit. And in regards to multifamily short-term rentals, the Council directed that up to two dwelling units in a multifamily building can be rented on a short-term basis without a host, provided that the other units are rented on a long-term basis. A public hearing on those proposed amendments, on these proposed amendments, excuse me, was planned and publicly noticed in March, but was ultimately canceled due to the spread of the coronavirus. On June 8th, in the interest of moving this item forward, Council directed staff to schedule a virtual Planning Commission public hearing to review the proposed amendments, which brings us to today. It is also important to note that on June 22nd, Council directed staff to return with an update of ZTA 17002, previously considered by Council, in an effort to more quickly put in place regulations to address short-term rental issues. If or when the amendments presented tonight complete the approval and certification process, they would supersede the ZTA regulations. A public hearing on the ZTA 17002 regulations is scheduled for the August 10th City Council meeting. Now I'll provide a brief overview of the amendments before you this evening. Next slide, please. City staff has worked with the staff in the City of Santa Monica and Malibu resident Michael Lustig to integrate the key provisions of the Santa Monica ordinance into the Malibu Municipal Code and develop these amendments. The differences between the ordinances are a result of Council's direction and the inherent differences between the two cities, including their existing municipal codes and policies. Key differences are highlighted here, and I will discuss a few of them now. One difference, as mentioned before, is that the proposed Malibu ordinance requires that the host lives on-site during the rental to maintain an on-site presence, but is not required to be within the rental rented unit itself. To reflect the difference, the ordinance uses the term hosted short-term rental rather than home share, which is the term used by Santa Monica. Another key difference is the proposed ordinance allows the owner or designated operator to serve as the host. Council had wanted to provide some limited flexibility here and allow owners who are primary residents to designate an operator to live on-site and address issues on their behalf. Both ordinances require that the short-term rental or STR permit holders be primary residents and require applicants to submit proof of primary residency. The difference here is that the Malibu documentation requirements are written to match the primary residency documentation requirements previously established for the Woolsey Fire Fee Waiver Program. Again, as mentioned earlier, the Malibu ordinance allows up to two units in a multifamily building to be rented without a host. Santa Monica does not allow this, but it allows long-term renters to obtain short-term rental permits. The Malibu ordinance does not. Only building orders can apply for permits under the proposed Malibu system. And one more difference I would like to point out here is parking. Here, the proposed ordinance is more restrictive, prohibiting offsite parking except in a few rare instances where onsite parking legally doesn't exist. Next slide, please. The zoning text amendment to the municipal code creates an annual STR permit system with two distinct permit types, one for hosted STRs and one for multifamily STRs. Owners of single-family homes or condominiums can apply for hosted STR permits. Under the terms of the hosted STR permit, the owner or designated operator must live on-site during the rental, appear within one hour of a phone call if issues arise during the rental, be on-site during the evening hours between 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and appear immediately if issues arise during this time. In recognition of the fact that the multifamily STR permit does not require an onsite host, the grounds for revocation of a multifamily permit are more stringent. Multifamily permits could be revoked only after two citations for violation in a 12-month period. Hosted STR permits are revocable after three citations unless those citations are related to noise violations. Next slide, please. The STR permit system includes general requirements that apply to all rentals, some of which are called out on the slide before you. These include the requirement that owners provide a 24/7 contact for addressing issues. This contact information will be provided to neighbors upon a permit approval and to the public upon request. All STRs must have an active onsite wastewater treatment system operating permit. It also establishes requirements for all STR advertisements, which include listing the permit in each ad, specifying the maximum occupancy, I'm sorry, the permit number in the ad, specifying the maximum occupancy and onsite parking restrictions, and explicitly stating that the owner or designated operator will live on-site during the rental. Lastly, it specifies the ground for denial or revocation of permits and the permit appeals process, which will go through the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. The ordinance includes provisions on hosting platform responsibilities that mirror the Santa Monica ordinance and have been successfully upheld in court. Among other things, they prohibit hosting platforms for completing a booking transaction for any short-term rental that is not listed on the city's approved permit registry. Next slide, please. The LCPA serves to memorialize the permitted short-term rental uses specified in the ZTA. The details of the STR permitting regulations are not included in the LCPA to allow for them to be adjusted from time to time as needed without having to get a certification by the Coastal Commission. Coastal Commission staff provide a brief preliminary comments on the LCPA today. At this time, staff has not had a chance to get more detail, so we don't know if they may have more comments later. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. Next slide, please. Planning Director Bonnie Blue, City Attorney Trevor Russen, and Associate Planner Justin Kendall are all here as well and are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Elizabeth. Kathleen?
Kathleen?
Yes.
How many, how many people do we have signed up to participate in?
We have 26.
26. Gentlemen, I think it's probably the best way to proceed is to open the public hearing. Let's get, I know we've all got a lot of questions about this, but let's get the public to have a chance to speak, and then we'll get an opportunity to go over our questions and our comments when we, when we return to the commission table. So Kathleen, who's the first, I'm sorry, Chris?
I just want to say, I know we've had a lot of correspondence, so I would ask whoever is going to speak if they could just let us know if they submitted anything so we can try to bring it up for reference. I know it would help me if, if, if that wouldn't be too much of a trouble.
Okay, fine, we have received a lot of correspondence. Kathleen?
Yes, the first speaker is Ian Ballin. Mr. Ballin, you have three minutes.
Mr. Ballin, can you hear me?
Let me check and see if there's some difficulty.
So far, so good.
I don't see them in the waiting room, or in, I'm sorry, in the meeting.
Okay, can we put a pin in that and, and, no pun intended, and bring up the next speaker and we'll bring back, come back to Mr. Ballin if he shows up.
Certainly. Dennis Sider?
Hi, this is Dennis Sider. Can you hear me?
Sider.
Gotcha. Hey, I did submit some written correspondence which matches my remarks. I have a question and a comment. My question is, I'm not sure what onsite means. I certainly understand the value of having someone close to the home that's rented that can respond very, very quickly in the event of an emergency or an annoyance to the neighborhood. However, I don't know too many houses that are built with the facility to house an onsite manager or owner. And although I understand we do not require, as Santa Monica does, that we have a host in the house with the guest, I wonder how most of us in Malibu can comply with this requirement if we don't have a separate dwelling unit, and most of these homes that rent are single-family residents' homes. So it's difficult for me to imagine how I could comply. That said, if it does require an owner or manager to live on the site, which I understood to be the lot on which the house is made, then I would object to passage in that form. I think that having done this for 40 years and having other situations where I left properties in other countries where emergencies could arise, so long as there's a manager responsible legally and who can respond in a timely fashion, I think that's sufficient without having them live on the site. On the other hand, if site includes the immediate neighborhood within 300 yards, then I could manage. That's my main comment. I think otherwise it's a well-intentioned project and it seems like it's going to help us preserve our neighborhoods. And living in a great neighborhood is what makes living in Malibu worthwhile in many, many ways. Can I get an answer to my question now, or do I have to wait?
I, I think if we start answering questions piece meal, it will probably take a lot longer, but that, that question is definitely going to come up. So if you just continue to monitor what we're saying here, we'll get to you before too long.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Kathleen?
The next speaker is Kent Roberts.
Okay. Mr. Roberts, can you hear me?
I am not seeing him in the meeting at the moment.
Okay, next.
Nellie Joy Reeves.
Okay. Ms. Reeves, can you hear me? Believe I've got you there, yeah. There we go.
Oh, good.
You're muted, though. You need to unmute yourself. You probably can't hear me. Here, you've got to... Is there any way to unmute her, Kathleen?
It says the host.
We got, we had her for a second.
All right. You there? Hello?
I can hear you now. Yeah, you're good.
Ms. Reeves?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, the video is not working, but you can hear me?
Yes.
You got you.
Okay, well, I just wanted to start off and say that my husband and I actually moved to Malibu in 2013 because one of our best friends was renting a house, a short-term rental. And so we had the beautiful experience of staying in Malibu for a week or two and falling in love with it. And that's what then led us to purchase a property and to make Malibu our home. So short-term rentals have, I think, definitely benefited Malibu in many ways, that being one. And then also, I think the economy has greatly benefited from families being able to come in and stay. And I think everyone would agree that we're not really in competition with a bunch of hotels comparable to Santa Monica and other cities in LA. There's really only a few hotels in Malibu which are quite pricey and not advantageous for families to afford to be able to come and stay together and commune in one, one zone. So I really hope that no matter what, we can find a way to keep the short-term rental business alive because I know that so many families have made beautiful memories. The next thing I want to say is that I really do think there should be rules implemented. And we've been doing Airbnb for five years, and we've never had one single noise complaint, never, not one. And that's because we have security cameras on the front of the house and the back of the house, no parties, no large gatherings. And we don't allow people to be outside in the backyard past 9:00 PM. We'd say, if you want to hang out, you got to go inside and respect our neighborhood. And so we have enforced really strict rules, no one under 25. And we vet each guest and make sure that their reviews are positive. And so I do think there's something to be said for stricter rules, better surveillance, monitoring parking, things like that. And also, I think that, you know, requiring someone to be on property, on-site, it really kind of takes away from the privacy of being able to, to hang out in the backyard altogether without me interfering with my guests, you know? And so as long as someone can be there in a timely manner, I think that would be a wonderful compromise, especially as someone that has gone above and beyond for five years straight to have zero noise complaints in a neighborhood where if you talk at a normal level, it echoes because I'm up in a Corral Canyon. So just something to think about, something to consider. And I would love to help implement any rules or regulations that could make this a more peaceful situation for everyone. And the last thing is, I think people that are just buying homes to Airbnb, multiple homes, I don't think that should be allowed because this home that we own is a home that we enjoy, that we stay in when we come to LA and we work. It's not just a rental property, it's an actual home. We do also live in Nashville, which is why we Airbnb it. So we would probably have to sell it if, if this whole thing goes through because it's, it helps pay for our mortgage, and that would be really sad. So food for thought.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next up, Kathleen?
Excuse me, Chair, I believe we've located Kent Roberts. It was under a different name.
Okay, Mr. Roberts, can you hear me?
Yes, hello?
Gotcha. Okay, I can hear you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm a 23-year resident of Malibu on Los Flores Beach. And I've had a, I've lived next to a short-term rental for eight years. I just wanted to just briefly talk about not specific items relative to Amendment 1903, but more specifically how the proliferation of short-term rentals in our neighborhood has really changed the, the nature of our community, so to speak, here on Los Flores Beach. We probably have about six short-term rentals on my short stretch of the beach, which would be run from north of Moon Shadows. And then up on the northern end of Los Flores, probably a dozen at least, also including two sobriety houses. And I could tell you that despite a lot of good intention on part of owners, the lack of supervision relative to these units has been a burden on the neighborhood. And I've had a lot of personal experience with this, parking issues, noise. And this is particularly a case with full-time effective hotels that are rented on a short-term basis. The other thing that I've noted, you know, on beachfront properties is that the, the conditions of, you know, beach access and the quality of the accesses are extremely poor in cases. And without naming names, I'm aware of a short-term rental that's in our stretch. I live in the duplex properties north of Moon Shadows that advertises on VRBO as Sleeping Tent. This is a 1850-foot side of a duplex. And one of the things I was interested in asking the commission was whether or not there was any portion of this that dealt with unsafe conditions, or whether there is any conditional use permits. Because this particular unit that I'm referring to has converted a garage to a bedroom to pack a few more people in. It's a continual parking problem for the neighborhood. And just wanted to also say that I have frankly never been a fan of the Airbnb, et cetera, business model. It essentially trades on taking away the enjoyment of full-time residents' homes.
Excuse me, Mr. Roberts, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Kathleen?
We are looking for Bill Sampson. We're not sure if he's there. But in case he's out there, we're calling his name, and then if he's not, perhaps we can circle back to him.
Okay. Mr. Sampson, can you hear me? I think not.
If you, if you can, click the raise hand button.
Raise hand button. I don't have one of those. No, he, he would have, not us, him.
If he kissed you with not under his own name, if he was just under a phone number.
And just so you know, I'm getting some, some input. I just got a call. Somebody is saying that their planning commission Zoom meeting just crashed. So anyway, just FYI.
Okay, we'll go back to Mr. Ballin, and we'll come back to Mr. Sampson. Who else is next, Kathleen?
Next, we have Kent Erlich.
Mr. Erlich, Ken?
I am not seeing him unless I'm missing him.
Mr. Erlich, can you press your raise hand button? Maybe that will help, if you can hear me.
There might be, my internet went out also earlier, so.
All right, we'll circle back, we'll circle back. We'll get everybody a chance to get on. So who's next after Ken Erlich?
Next, we have Graham Clifford.
Hello, Jeff.
Graham, we can hear you.
Good. Well, hello, Mr. Chairman, and hello, Commissioners. I'm here to, I think you have heard my position on this short-term rental many times, but I'm just back again to reiterate. And I would, I would love to ban Airbnb and the like completely, but of course, that's probably, I'm not, not going to happen. So I'm in favor of supporting the next best thing, which is a revision of the Santa Monica ordinance, which, which I know you're considering to do. I'm a 40-year resident of Malibu, so I know the area pretty well, like you do, Jeff. And I, and my main complaint about short-term rentals is that they have no, no, no concern for community whatsoever, even though they say they do. You know, it's, it's, basically, it's all about money, nothing else. And that our community is in, or has been and is continually being trashed because of short-term rentals, hence Mr. Roberts, who just spoke a minute ago. And communities worldwide are fed up with short-term rentals, so it's a big problem. We're losing school kids because of lack of reasonably priced, priced long-term rentals. And I noticed on the agenda, it says, requiring onsite host during certain short-term rentals. Well, what the word certain stands out like a sore thumb. What does that mean? That's a loophole, I presume. Unless it means multifamily residences, but, and I do strongly believe if we're going to do this, that there has to be an onsite host. I believe it's supposed to be an owner, right? So if the owner lives in the house and he's renting a bungalow at the back, he can be onsite. And the fact that Ms. Reeves wanted total privacy with nobody on-site, that's a non-starter, as far as I'm concerned. And also, you know, having someone like Ms. Reeves, I don't, she's probably a lovely lady, but I mean, she obviously doesn't live there. She lives there when it's convenient for her. The rest of the time, she lives somewhere else. And that's, that's not what we're trying to, they're not the kind of people we're trying to accommodate here. We're trying to accommodate residents who are legitimately trying to rent their small unit short for short terms. And, and also, how do you, you know, we have a terrible, terrible, terrible record of enforcement. So how are we going to enforce this? There's never, you know, there's never any budget for enforcement. And so even if you can report a violation, who's going to do something about it? And who's going to know if it's done within an hour? And are we going to make the violations public or not? Because I think we should. And, and I, you know, I guess my time's up, Jeff, but, but you get, you get the gist.
We do. Thank you. Kathleen?
Next, we have Don Tullison, but we're not sure we see Mr. Tullison in the room. So if he does not come forward now, we'll just circle back around if it's.
Okay.
I don't believe we're hearing him right now, so we can go to Mary Jones?
Mary Jones. Mary Jones, Mary Jones.
I do see Mary Jones in the.
I see Mary Jones. She's got, there she is.
I'm here. Hello.
Whoops.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you. I happen to agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Reeves. I furthermore feel that short-term rentals can adequately be handled by homeowners associations and the neighborhood within which the property is located. Prior to acquiring property, homeowners and renters can review the CCNR's rules and regulations of that community and would understand whether or not, which in most beach communities, these properties are rented. I moved to Malibu and have been a property owner since 1980. I own two properties in Malibu, one on the beach that I've been renting since 2008. And like Ms. Reeves, I can say that I have never had one complaint for noise or people parking off my property, and that's on a beach property. I have strict rules and regulations with respect to the terms and conditions of any tenants. With respect to Mr. Sider's concern, I have to say we need a lot more information on what site host's responsibilities would be. A lot of these homes are single-family dwellings where they rent the entire house, and there's no place for the owner to stay or live, nor would the tenants who are renting them want the owners there. But responsible tenants have people that are available at a moment's notice for any problems that might come up. And I think responsible homeowners who want to rent their properties and have proven in Malibu to be responsible shouldn't be penalized by rules and regulations that are similar to a city that has nothing to do with the way people live in Malibu. Santa Monica's program, I would have to say, would need massive renovations for it to be anything acceptable for, for the City of Malibu and its unique qualities and requirements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathleen, who's next?
Next, we have Dean Winner.
Mr. Winner?
Can you hear me?
Now we do, Dean, yes.
Excellent. Hello, thanks for taking the time and inviting us to speak. I've been fortunate to visit Malibu many years. I'm an engineer. I've worked in El Segundo, Torrance, the San Francisco. I've been fortunate to visit Malibu many years. I'm an engineer. I've worked in El Segundo, Torrance, the San Francisco area. We've visited Malibu many, many times over the years. It's been a dream of my wife and I to live in Malibu. We were fortunate enough about eleven months ago to purchase a property. We hope to retire there in the near future, but in the meantime, we have set up as an occasional short term rental. We've gone out of our way to be respectful and to get to know the neighbors. I must say, though, after listening to some other prior meetings and other comments here tonight, I can appreciate where some people are coming from, because if they've had to put up with the things they have, it's completely unacceptable. My one question is, and I know it won't be answered here right now, but it's hard to tell where complaints have been logged through the hotline or with the sheriff's office to kind of distinguish what's a real complaint versus some people's what ifs and general concerns of what could happen. So I just want to make sure we're being fair in that regard, because additional regulation, when we've had difficulty enforcing what we have, is troublesome. And I find it very hard to swallow when I understand through my contacts at the sheriff's facility that it's a handful of properties with some owners that just aren't respectful. I'd like to believe there's ways to deal with that. Relative to the regulation, I apologize, I did submit comments that were rather lengthy to have hopefully people take a look at. The onsite host thing is troublesome for the reasons that were mentioned by others here. I think there are other effective means to deal with that. For instance, I employ local people when I'm not around that can be there in a moment's notice who actually do the cleaning and look after the guests and make sure they're taken care of and are being respectful. And all of that, we have a security system in place for the same reasons that other people have mentioned on the call. So I just find it troublesome to eliminate, to have requirement for an onsite host. I think that will lead to STRs essentially being a ban, because there's so few properties where people will feel comfortable renting with someone being there. And that would be unfortunate as well, because I don't think it's consistent with the values of the city or the plans, including the coastal act, because it would unfortunately not allow access to a lot of people like myself in the past to be able to have access to beautiful community. So I would ask you to take a look at all the comments. I know you'll do the right thing and do what's right for the community. I just don't think additional regulation and a permitting system at this time will lead to any different results. And I would ask for us to try to find a way to band together to unroot the ones that aren't cooperating and being disrespectful, so the community can be everything it wants to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A quick favor, I'm not finding Mr. Winter's written comments. Does anyone have reference to that or are they seeing that?
Kathleen, maybe you could look for them after, after we get the next speaker on.
Yes, I'm happy to.
And the next speaker would be?
Elchin Sadagov.
Elchin Sadagov.
I'm not sure I see him.
Okay. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Oh, hello.
I'm on PCH, who are doing Airbnb. And regarding the decisions we're discussing, I can't agree completely with the requirement of onsite presence during all bookings. Again, the most guests want privacy and and the reason they try to do the short term rentals in many cases is privacy. Yeah, all security measures, cameras, like cold entries and such things. I don't think that if we, this regulation to require the presence, we can't, our business can't even survive with these regulations. Because again, as on the other side, if you know that everyone would pay almost two percent tax, the taxes, which also helps our community to grow and prosper. I will also leave in Malibu, but in my opinion, I completely agree with Mary Jones's comments that regulation, the part of the regulation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Beginning to break up there at the end, I think, a little bit. Kathleen, next?
Next, we have Joe Drummond.
Ms. Drummond.
Hi there.
Gotcha.
Okay. Honorable Planning Commissioners, I did write you telling, telling you that my husband and our family of five go away for several weeks in the summer as well as the winter for two weeks. And when we do, we rent out our home to help defray property taxes and college tuition. We have three kids that need college paid for. That's hundreds of thousands of dollars as now. We rented out for a minimum of one week, often renting regularly for twelve to fifteen days to similar families such as ours, just needing a getaway. They are always quiet and respectful and enjoy our home. They use the entire house, so there would be no place for an onsite host to be present for privacy reasons. My neighbor would be willing to, but we also will hire people who could be there at an instant, so that's not a problem. And we have rules in place and cameras as well. Please have consideration for homeowners who are not making a full time living off short term rentals, but trying to make ends meet by renting out their home for a short period of time during the year, when most neighbors are also on holiday. The better option over the onsite host would be to limit the number of days allowed during the year, i.e. sixty days maximum. Or we owner vacationers could apply for a special event permit for every short term rental to a maximum of four to six times per year, perhaps. We would also hope that you do not raise the already high TOT twelve percent tax to fifteen percent. That's the fair chunk out of the earnings that again, go towards our property taxes, etc. Thank you for your consideration in this matter and looking out for the little guys in Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Kathleen?
Next, we have Colin Drummond.
Mr. Drummond.
Hi, thank you, honorable.
Excuse me just a second. Kathleen, can we get the clock to settle down? It's jumping.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Get that going. One moment. Sorry about that. Little technical difficulty. It is still flashing, so I will look into, I'll start it at three and look into why it's doing that.
Okay. Can you start it at three then?
Yes.
Light on Zoom.
If y'all bear with me a moment, I'm going to try one thing to.
We work against like a stopwatch and just call out a thirty second warning like we do.
We may need to.
Yeah, I would put my phone on, but then when the phone interrupts my hearing, I can't hear anything, so.
I can do that if, if need be.
If you, yeah, put it on your, ask Siri to set the timer for three minutes.
So it's stable on my end. It just seems to be jumping around on.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, all right. Well, if it's stable on your end, then you just warn me when we're coming up to it, as you did earlier. Colin Drummond, now we're ready to start with you. You've got three minutes. Mr. Drummond, oh, good.
You got it. Thank you, honorable Commissioners. So I'm going to add to what my wife, Jo, was talking about. And that it does seem like an onsite host is less like a reasonable attempt to restrict STRs and more like a way to just outright eradicate them. And so to us, it seems like it's, it's trampling on our rights as taxpaying homeowners. We all know and fear Malibu becoming half empty, filled with strangers, the neighborhood lost, and, you know, there's wild weekend parties and that kind of vision and so on. But we think it's helpful to view STR owners in kind of two very different ways. There are those who are attempting to draw income on like a full time basis and are really never in that home, and those who are supplementing their incomes occasionally like ourselves. So using ourselves as examples, we're, you know, we're not turning Malibu into like some ghost town. We're highly active and we're visible in a community. Our kids go to Malibu High. We shop at Ralph's. We go to, you know, the Malibu cookoff, not this year, of course. So we're not a threat to the fabric of Malibu. We're an important part of it as an example. So we think the ordinance should make reasonable accommodations for different types of scenarios and not just use a blunt instrument for all of it. So specifically, we've had it suggested that the special events permit perhaps could be adjusted based on some criteria like total number of days or weeks. So a starting point could be people who go on vacation. And what number of days or weeks would make sense? I think probably a lot of people get four weeks vacation plus between Christmas and New Year. So does that add up to something like six weeks? I don't know if that's the exact recommendation, but we just think it's fair and reasonable to accommodate people who are not trying to make a full time living out of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Drummond. Kathleen?
Next, we have Lynn Norton.
Lynn?
Looks like I have twenty six seconds to speak.
Yeah, if you hurry, you can get it in.
It's actually three. We're having a little interface difficulty, but I do see that, I'll give you a warning.
I've got three minutes now. That looks good.
Okay. So good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the direction we're going in, following Santa Monica's home sharing, and I think the staff did a good job. You know, I've heard these comments with regards to, I wasn't going to say this, but with regards to houses that are just where there is no permanent full time resident, it has to do with our housing stock. It has to do with having neighbors in our neighborhood. It has to do with our school systems. It's more than just noise. And I want to just quickly. Am I being stopped?
My apologies.
Hello?
Go ahead, Lynn.
I do want to read something that, I want to read something that Craig Hill had sent probably to you, and he said it to me, and it was an article that I believe Trevor wrote years ago, and it has a quote in here, and this is regards to Carmel having put a full ban on short term rentals. It says, "The court found that short term rentals alone, even in the absence of neighbor complaints, sufficiently threatened the residential character of a neighborhood because, quote, 'short term tenants have little interest in public agencies or in the welfare of the citizenry.'" I want to talk about something else, which is that you've probably all read an article about a Santa Monica lawsuit where the court said that home sharing, quote, "does not require a coastal development permit, and the coastal commission's authority does not extend to approving or rejecting general laws adopted by cities." And the more I think about this, the more I question why we are thinking of taking this to coastal. And I think it's really important to talk, you know, that we get that right, as well as just getting the ordinance itself right. It's, it's not good if we spend two years going through the coastal, and it's not good if we invite coastal to tell us things, you know, how we should do things if we don't need to invite them to. And I'm also concerned that we could create some unintended precedents in our quote unquote interim ordinance. So I have two questions for the city attorney, which I hope one of you guys would write down and ask the city attorney. Is there any reason Malibu would be different than Santa Monica regarding the requirement to go to coastal? I looked online and Santa Monica has a local coastal program just as we do, so I'm wondering why we would, might be any different than them. And two, I have never understood why the interim ordinance does not need to go to coastal, and this ordinance, you know, this set of rules would need to go to coastal. So I would love to understand that. Just, anyway, I just think we should make every effort to see if we can implement an ordinance like this without going to coastal. And just FYI, I looked online at the Airbnb in Malibu, and I could only find eight short term rentals in the entire length of Malibu that were under a hundred fifty dollars a night. But when I changed my search to over seven hundred dollars, I stopped counting at a hundred of them. So we're really not giving up, you know, access for low income households to come to the beach by doing this. And I'm probably out of time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Next, Kathleen?
Next, we have Norman Haney.
Norm? I can see you, I can, nope.
Can you hear me now?
Can hear you now.
All right. Well, good evening, Planning Commissioners. I have one issue, and I agree with Lynn Norton. There is no reason to send us to the California Coastal Commission. The local coastal program amendment is simply not needed. There's nothing in the LCP to amend. There is nothing in Malibu's LCP that regulates short term rentals. The closest thing to short term rentals in Malibu's LCP is bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast ends. And they can only be located in CV one or CV two, which are commercial. I've had many times to talk to Jack Amesworth, who's the executive director of the California Coastal Commission. And every time I've asked him about the LCP, so, so on and so forth, he's always said that the coastal commission is not going to interpret Malibu's local coastal program. It is up to the city to interpret Malibu's local coastal program. And since there is nothing in Malibu's LCP that talks about short term rentals in residentially zoned neighborhoods, it is not in the purview of the coastal commission. It is completely within the domain of the city of Malibu. We make a mistake when we go to the coastal commission and ask for permission or ask to change things, which they do not have authority over. They will gladly accept authority over it, and we will be sorry for the rest of Malibu's cityhood. So those are my comments. I, I simply, I agree with Lynn Norton. And apparently there's an example with the Santa Monica city of Santa Monica's LCP. They have restrictions on short term rentals, and they didn't go to the coastal commission. So I I really don't want to give the coastal commission more authority than they have a right to, or that they even want. So those are my comments, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Kathleen?
We have one moment, please. We have Craig Hill next.
Mr. Hill?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Broadly, I would urge you to adopt the comments of Lynn Norton and Norm Haney and Graham Clifford and Michael Lustig, I'm sure will have the right things to say. I have a lot of quick points here. The Carmel decision clarifies that neighbor complaints are irrelevant. The mere presence of a commercial STR, quote, threatens the residential character of a neighborhood because short term tenants have little interest in the welfare of the citizenry. Just having a different stranger next door every night is harm enough, whether they're causing a disturbance or not. That decision is precedential. So the primary resident must be onsite, whether they're the owner or long term tenant. That's it in Santa Monica, and it's the only way to maintain neighbor presence. In the current draft, the operator is merely, quote, authorized to live onsite. That means nothing. It's inadequate. We must require that the primary resident be onsite. Now, the ZTA isn't needed because an appellate court found that the Santa Monica ordinance is, quote, "a valid exercise of the city's police power, does not require a CDP, and the coastal commission's authority does not extend to approving or rejecting general laws adopted by cities," unquote. So don't feel constrained by the notion that Malibu might be different in coastal's eyes, because the city can point to that ruling to show we're not acting capriciously. And there are more hotels coming, if that's a difference. In any case, the legal baseline is that residential neighborhoods aren't zoned for commercial lodging, which means that any ordinance is already a huge concession to coastal's visitor serving mandate. For families that want to go on vacation for several weeks each year and rent out their house, you can address that separately under a special event permit with a few minor amendments. But don't try to incorporate that into the STR ordinance at the risk of compromising the certainty that the Santa Monica model provides. On multifamily units, up to two units should apply only to buildings of at least four, so that a two or three unit building can't be a majority STR. Let's have a published registry as per Santa Monica. The definition of primary residence should be as strict as Santa Monica's requiring two forms of ID, not just one. The draft's emphasis on individuals rather than circumstances or conditions produces perverse outcomes. For example, it would allow operator onsite to mean sleeping in a car. And as it stands, anyone other than the owner could park any number of cars on the public street, so a family member could do it. So specify not one permit per individual, but one permit per household or family. So make your intent known and ask staff to consider perverse interpretations more carefully, because certain property owners will be looking for those loopholes. Um, staff's definition of dwelling unit is more broad than Santa Monica's. I don't see how mobile homes work in this context. And as a matter of housekeeping, it looks like you must amend municipal code one point ten to include STRs under administrative citations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Oh, by the way, um, can you call a few people in advance because some people are worried that they're, they're losing their place in line? Thank you.
Okay, yes, certainly.
Give me the next three, Kathleen.
We have Sean Z, Mark Maniscalco, and Michael Lustig. So Sean Z, we'll start with Sean.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, I, we recently bought a house, not recent, but a few years uh, at Malibu because we used to visit my sister in Malibu. We love the city. And we know because the cost of the price of the house, the real estate is so expensive, we couldn't afford it. So that's why we use short term rental as a supplement to pay part of our mortgage. Uh, without that, I don't think I can even afford it. Uh, we, we respect our neighbors. We are very careful. Uh, we are, we also talk to our neighbors. We're friends with them. And if there's any problem of our renters, we would immediately know about it. They have our phone number. We have cameras everywhere. Out, of course, outdoor in, on the property. And we watch them all the time. We, we make sure they don't have any parties. We very strictly monitor. There's, you know, more, not more people than they stated uh, when they rent our property. And we don't want people to come and trash our house either. So it's a, it's a mutual thing. It's not just, okay, the neighbors against neighbor. I have a feeling that some of people, they just treat the whole of short term rental as enemies or something. That we're bad people. That's just wrong because there are few bad apples, but you cannot treat people, you cannot stereotype people. Most of us are very respectful. We very, we, we don't want to bother the neighbors. We don't want to have any problem. And on the top of that, is some, somebody mentioned money. Yes, it's money for the city, money for the local business. We, especially when these virus episodes going on, a lot of shops have to close. When people come to visit, they spend money. You know, it's, 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 it's good for the business. It's good for the community. I do not understand why it is such a bad thing. Um, and also on top of that, in terms of the, uh, the few bad apples, I, I do agree, we need to more strictly reinforce the, you know, if there's any problem, city should get involved, writing letters or citations. The owner may have to provide explanation what's going on. And I understand there are maybe some cooperation coming in to, you know, try to change the culture of the city, but most of the owners who are in this shortened rentals are not like that. But, you know, people just give everybody the impression that all of us are quote unquote, bad people, money hungry people, which is absolutely not true. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Kathleen, Mark, I didn't get the last name. His next, Mark Maniscalco. And who is after Mr. Lustig, who follows him?
We, it looks like we have Don Tolleson back, um, under the name of Brian Walters.
Under the name of Brian Walters. Well, let's go with Mark, um, Maniscalco.
You may start.
Okay, guys. Um, so I, I've lived on Malibu Road for nine years. I rented an apartment for five years and then I bought my own multifamily building. And the reason why I bought a multifamily building is it's obviously a lot easier to maintain in terms of payments and the amount of upkeep and everything that's, that's there. So I have a four unit building. Primary residence is one of my units. Another unit is rented out full time to a local Malibu business owner. And she's been there for about three years. She sent in a letter to you guys, which you guys I'm sure can pick up. She owns a dance studio. She's wrote a great letter about how there's short term rentals to the right, short term rentals to the left. And it's never bothered her one bit. She has no problem with the parking, no problem with the amount of people, no problem with the amount of noise because I'm such a hard ass and I watch everything like a hawk. So whether it's me watching my own building or it's the people to the left or the people to the right, they're all managed and they're managed very well. So when there's good management, there is no problem. But the thing I do have is sometimes I cannot be onsite. I do have to work. I don't do short term rentals for a living. I have to go out and travel when I have to go someplace. So I may not be there some of the time. So I have an onsite manager that lives four houses away. So part of your terms and conditions that you guys have is you have to respond within an hour. What's the difference if they're onsite or they respond within an hour? You're, either way, you're going to get somebody within the hour to take care of the situation. And of course, the owner could be available twenty four seven like myself, but I may not physically be there. So I have to designate somebody else to do that and I pay that person and that person does a very good job doing that. You know, if you look at some of the other cities, I, I've seen short term rentals. I've stayed at Airbnbs all over the world. If you go to Las Vegas and you want to rent a short term rental and you have a bunch of violations, they don't say you have to have an onsite manager and all this stuff. They send you to a short term rental class. And if you fail the class, you can't get your short term rentals back. It's just like getting a speeding ticket. You got to go to traffic school and learn about all the rules and regulations. But you don't need to be onsite. I mean, I think that's one thing that, uh, you know, if we've done a great job for two years, three years, we're going to continue to do a good job. And it's our own, it's our own property. We obviously don't want to have it ruined. We have our own cameras, but having an onsite manager available is, is, is difficult. And then what are we going to do? Pay that person extra and then lose even more money? So I, I, I have obviously a problem with that. And obviously I have rented long term rentals as I have in the past. And it is really difficult to find a good tenant sometimes, especially now with, with COVID nineteen. We're not going to get the best of all people looking for places to live or anyone looking to have a second or third home. Because that's where all my renters are. My places are two bedrooms and larger, and those are the types of people that are renting those. You know, and I did read that you guys think that short term rentals are going to reduce the inventory and rental stock. Oceanfront homes are not low income rentals. They're never going to be anywhere in the world. So perhaps the Malibu commissioner should approach developers and look into low, building low income housing up in the hills or something if you guys need low, low income housing. But don't hurt the short term renters who are business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Michael Lustig, I think is next, and then John Tolleson. We're going to go him, to him after that. And then who's after that, Kathleen?
We have Nicholas Hale and Stuart Heller and then John Stiegler.
Okay, you got too many for me. I've lost track. Let's go with Mr. Lustig.
Certainly.
Someone might have to unmute him manually. I think he was one of the ones having trouble getting in.
Alex, do you happen to see that difficulty?
He's not on the list, uh, if he can raise his hand, but other than that, I don't see him.
Yeah, and I, I think some people are saying they had to call in, so I don't know if they could raise their hand.
Okay, I'll, I'll mention that when we.
We'll, we'll, we'll circle back to all these people. We'll get, come back to Mr. Lustig, Mr. Lustig. And, uh, let's go with John Tolleson because I see his name up there. Or Don Tolleson, I'm sorry.
Hey, one moment, please. Okay, Mr. Tolleson, you may begin.
Can you hear me?
We got you, yeah.
Good. Don Tolleson, I've owned, uh, unoperated vacation rentals for thirteen years now. And so far, I've never had a complaint. My neighbors are, are fine with the vacation rentals. I listen to the complaints and I listen to everybody for them and, and I kind of understand some of the complaints. Um, my first question is onsite. I, I don't quite understand what, what that means. So when you do an explanation later, you said you're going to hold off on answering questions. Explain exactly what that means because I would certainly like to continue with my business. And, uh, I think that, uh, the TOT was mentioned, and I don't know why it was mentioned, but I'm an advocate of raising the TOT to fourteen percent. I, I think that, uh, that's a eighteen percent increase in revenue for the city of Malibu, which represents three hundred thousand dollars a year. I hear, uh, something about how these vacationers don't contribute anything. They contribute two million dollars a year in TOT. That's transient occupancy taxes that is going to be gone. It's going to be missing from the budget. So, uh, I, I think that should be considered. And, uh, I really, I really don't, uh, I really don't know what is meant by, you know, having somebody onsite. I, I don't think it's necessary. Like if I can be there within thirty minutes, I, I never travel anymore because of my vacation rentals. I'm glued to the area here. I'm available within thirty minutes. So I think that, uh, we have to really consider these vacationers as much as some people don't want a change in the neighborhood. You've got to consider there's an awful lot of vacationers and they replace the long term tenants on a one for one basis, one for one. Uh, they don't increase the density. They shouldn't increase the parking. And they don't increase the septic system use. See, so for every short term tenant, there's a long term tenant and so forth. It's, it's kind of hard to understand, but they don't increase anything. And the most important thing to me is that you create some kind of an event fee for parties that virtually eliminates parties. And that's what I do. I have a party fee. And I might have one party every couple of years and it's not much. And ninety nine percent of the complaints that I've heard at the city, at the city council meetings have been party related, noise, parking, things like that. So these are considerations. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tolleson. Um, Kathleen, we had, um, I only got part of the name, Nicholas.
We have Nicholas Hale.
Nicholas Hale. And who's after that, please?
Um, Stuart Heller.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, I am an STR owner and have dealt with this for many years. Uh, been to pretty much every meeting and I'd like to touch upon a number of topics. Uh, just like Don Tolleson had mentioned, I don't know if you guys are aware. I've done the numbers. I'm a numbers guy in general. These restrictions of an onsite manager would basically eliminate ninety percent of the STRs in Malibu. This would eliminate ninety percent of the tax revenue for the city, which we all depend upon for the well being of our streets, sidewalks and lights that we have in certain places. Uh, living on Point Doom, we're looking forward to, um, some improvements and I think this tax money is well needed. Personally, I've had nothing less than a wonderful experience, uh, with the STR that I have. Uh, I've met people from all over the world. I've had no complaints and I've done business as usual. This does, as other owners have mentioned, pump a lot of money into our local economy. And I'd like to propose a few other, uh, solutions. There are professional short term management companies out there that can respond within an hour if an owner is not able to be within the city or within the country, whatever the case might be. It might be a good requirement to have a short term rental management company be the here and the hay and, and, and the say, if you will, for any particular owner. Um, just like a contractor is when they're building a home for an owner here. I lost a home in the Woolsey Fire that was a well, uh, was an investment. I've had to go down and, and meet with you guys many times on many other occasions under many other circumstances. But I think there are solutions to this without having to, uh, eliminate ninety percent of the business that we are doing. For those of us who are doing it right, we shouldn't be punished for, you know, the actions of the few, if you will. I'd like to recite one last thing. I've done my research on the topic as well, uh, as far south as San Diego. And they've already dealt with the coastal commission. And in a letter dated July thirteenth, twenty eighteen, they quote unquote, say, "Lower cost visitor recreational facilities shall be protected, comma, encouraged, and where feasible, provided." These things are not going to make a big difference if we get them past coastal. You guys have control. We're trusting in you to do the right thing. We'd like to continue doing business. And for those who are not doing it correctly, if they get a complaint, please revoke their license. I think it's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Stuart Heller is next, Kathleen, I believe.
That is, yes, that is correct.
And who's after Mr. Heller?
John Stiegler and then Terry Lukoff.
Okay, Mr. Heller, you're up.
Mr. Heller, if you can hear us, could you please raise your hand? Maybe circle back to Mr. Heller.
Okay, Mr. Heller, we'll add you to the second call. John Stiegler, can we get you?
Who, do you hear me?
Can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks for allowing me to speak. Um, I sent an email into Kathleen and, uh, and to get the, uh, to, from, from, going back, requesting from, starting from like November of nineteen, seven, two thousand seventeen, when we started the public hearings, uh, on short term rentals to find out from then to now or, or as much information as we could get to find out actually how many complaints were actually lodged with any of the, um, complaint, uh, places where people can, to, can lodge a complaint to really uh, find out where, how, to understand these complaints. And I know we get a lot of people on, you know, we get people on the, on the calls and, but these would be to, to try to uh, verify these, uh, the situation with the actual complaints. And, uh, and then to take a look at that and to see where they are coming from and, you know, and also i- in different areas of Malibu and to find out, uh, did, did, was there any enforcement on any of these complaints? You know, what happened with these? Because, you know, unfortunately, we, we, we do have current rules and regulations about short term. And, but I don't believe that, uh, any of these things have been enforced. And, uh, and here we're, you know, adding a lot more regulations. And if we weren't able to enforce the ones we currently have, you know, what's going to happen then? I, uh, you know, I've been doing short term rental, uh, for, for five years now and, uh, and have, uh, haven't had any complaints, uh, and, uh, uh, and I, I hope that, uh, we could keep, uh, keep this going, um, and, uh, but, uh, of course, Paramount is to keep the, uh, the neighborhoods, uh, and neighbors, uh, happy with and, uh, and, and, and giving them also the opportunity if they wanted to engage in this that they could. So, you know, it's, it's a little common sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stiegler. Um, Terry Lukoff, I think is next.
Yes, that is correct.
And who's after Terry, Kathleen?
We have Yalena Spajic and Rob Bauer.
Okay, I'll try to pronounce those names when I see them up there.
Can you hear me?
Got you, Terry.
You? Okay. Short term rentals are destroying Malibu. It has destroyed neighborhoods. It is destroying our school system. It destroyed our shopping. No more local shops. The school system has seen a total decline in the number of students. People are capitalizing by turning their residential units into short term rentals. This is totally illegal. This is not, I'm not bothering my neighbor. This is that the short term rental is destroying Malibu and it's destroying the neighborhoods. There should be a total ban on short term rentals. The city seems unwilling to do that. They ought to ban district, certain areas that can have short term rentals. So people that want to live in neighborhoods can be protected. What you're doing is you're turning every place in Malibu into a hotel. Two, three years ago, you voted no on a hotel at, uh, Malibu Canyon in the Coast Highway. But instead, during that period in the last three or four years, you've allowed Malibu to, every single house to be a hotel. What's happened is it's destroyed everything. You're destroying everything by allowing this to continue. And I would hope that you would put the strictest recommendations on this. Put zoning areas where this can happen, make people be onsite. This is not, gee, we had to pay our mortgage or gee, we've never had a complaint from the neighbors. You do have a complaint. You've destroyed the neighborhood. The cost of living in Malibu is so expensive that you've destroyed the school system. I think that that's the thing that you have to understand as you look at this tonight. You have to take the short term. You have to take the short-term rentals in the context of the future of all of Malibu and how Malibu will be from now into the future. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Terry. Kathleen, what was the next name? I'm sorry. John.
Did we get John Siegler? Yes.
Didn't we do?
Yeah, John spoke already. Yelena Spadnick was next.
Thank you so much. There we go.
Yelena Spadick, okay. Can you bring her up?
Let's see. I'm looking and not seeing, so if if you're there, Yelena Spadick, could you please raise your hand?
That means to press, press on the little button that says raise your hand.
Yes, please.
All right, well, that adds another one to second call. Who's after Yelena?
We have Rob Bauer and then Sharon Karsh.
Okay, Rob, Rob, is it? Rob Bauer, yes, okay. No. I thought I had Rob Allen, but Mr. Bauer, if you're up, let's take you.
Maybe, maybe he goes by Rob Allen?
Or Rob Allen? Rob Allen Bauer. I don't see anybody or hear anybody responding.
I don't either.
Hey, there is a phone number in the system. It's the, if you look at the last entry that I'm seeing in the attendees, there's someone ending in nine-seven-two. Maybe unmute them. Yeah, maybe that's one of the people we're looking for.
Is that something you can do, Alex? I'm not showing that I can do that.
I've seen a nine-seven-two out of our, up on the screen.
They're unmuted.
Whoever is at the number ending in nine-seven-two, if you can just announce yourself, are you one of the names which is called?
Um. This is Beatrix Zilinski. I signed in as Jean Zilinski because originally I was on a Zoom meeting, but then my internet crashed, so now I'm on phone.
We've got you now, go ahead.
Can you?
Go ahead and speak.
I'm sorry, could you wait just a moment while I see about adding you as a speaker? If I don't see you here on our list, just so we can start the timer.
Okay.
Should be just a moment. Okay. So Ms. Zilinski, you may begin.
Good evening, planning commissioners, planning staff. Thank you so much for this ordinance. I think for the most part, this is a pretty good ordinance. It's hard not to be frustrated listening to these "don't tread on me" speakers. Where have they been the last six years coming up with suggestions on how to solve some of the issues that long, permanent residents deal with with the short-term rentals? In any event, I think this ordinance is good, with the exception of the special event permit, because one thing everyone seems to be in agreement on is the parties seem to be the ones that cause the most problems. So special event permits should not be available for any short-term rental. And that means that there's never more than fourteen people, no matter how big the house is. So I think the language needs to be changed on that. Then I'm a little bit unclear on the term individual as far as how many short-term rentals can be owned by an individual, because a lot of properties are owned by corporations and family trusts and we're trying, trying to avoid multiple property ownership and I would like to support adopting Mr. Lustig's suggestion of specifying no short-term rentals for less than twenty-four hours, to drop the contract with host compliance and contract Hamari.com for compliance software instead, and to hire and train two dedicated city compliance officers. This ordinance has been the result of many years of a lot, a lot, a lot of work on the part of many people. It's not a punishment. It's a very thoughtful and generous concession to short-term rental landlords on the part of the full-time residents of Malibu. We are granting you a privilege. It's not a right. So thank you so much and with those changes as far as not allowing special event permits and also that addresses the parking feature as well. So no short-term rentals to groups of people more than fourteen. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Who've you got next, Kathleen?
We have located Sharon Karsh. So let me pull Sharon up here. Hello?
Hello.
One moment, please. Let me just pull your name up here. Just fix this here. It'll take just a moment. I, I need to.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, certainly. Thank you for your patience. Okay, if you'd like to begin, Ms. Karsh.
Okay, hi. Thank you for letting me speak, all the commissioners of Malibu. I think most of you know me because I was married to the late Steve Karsh. And he is quite a guy in Malibu and I'm also a volunteer worker for the city of Malibu. And I've lived on Malibu Road and he actually bought this house in the eighties. And now he's passed away and I have to, you know, I would like to continue living here. And the only way for me to do that is to rent out my house. But while he was still alive, we had a unit downstairs and he let me do that as my own business and have Airbnb. And I noticed it was such a great joy for us to have people come and stay at our house, enjoy our house, and become friends of ours for the rest of our lives. Of course, being in your, in your own house, you definitely take all precautions to make sure these people, you know, are going to be good people and to, you know, act like this house is their house. Your house is their house. So it has worked out for me for many years. And now that I really need it because he's passed on for income, I really depend on it and if this ordinance comes through, this is not going to work out for me at all because I have to live here. I have to leave to, you know, you know, to, to rent it out. The other thing that people haven't been mentioning is, have you ever traveled and stayed in an Airbnb? It's just like the most unbelievable experience. And it is like Malibu has less than a hundred hotel rooms. So you go to, I've been to Australia, New Zealand whilst my husband was alive and was able to travel and Italy and all these places and stayed at Airbnbs where there's a fridge and there's people there to help you out and tell you where to go and where to shop and where to eat. Like, you know, this is like, this makes a vacation unbelievable. And you're going to like try and put a stop to that. It's just really unfair to the rest of the world, especially right now in COVID time. So I agree that there may be some bad hosts in Malibu for short-term rentals, but the proposed ordinance is definitely too strict. It will greatly reduce my income and I have to be on-site for my own home while it is rented. I only have two bedrooms and two bathrooms. And I will rent it for extremely less money. Only one bedroom is available and very uncomfortable for other people to be there. So and it's also at this moment a health hazard. So my recommendation is to make a fair ordinance, which does not require an onsite manager unless you have a series of violations, which none of us, me and my neighbors who all Airbnb around Malibu Road have never had. I am like, you know, I've only met great people. I have no idea where this bad stuff is coming from. I really don't. And I think I'm a super host. I've been one, I've been a host for one of the longest from anybody in Malibu. And I just, you know, I, I can't even believe that this is happening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Karsh. Kathleen?
Okay, so we have Jeff Bossen, Kevin Hossith and Andy Gumbiner for the next three.
Okay.
So Jeff Bossen, if you're there. And you're ready to speak?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, so I'm addressing the the Malibu short-term rentals. Seeing as requiring an onsite host in an STR would eliminate ninety-five percent of the existing short-term rentals in Malibu. The proposal that you're entertaining would result in a severe reduction in the number of you, potential units available for overnight rental, therefore be subject to denial from the Coastal Commission. The reason some of the speakers before were asking what is different about Malibu from Santa Monica? Santa Monica never had allowed short-term rentals. They never issued permits. That's what makes Malibu different. So when you talk about Coastal Commission, Coastal Commission will see that as a large change in the coastal plan. They will require that they weigh in on it. They see short-term rentals as a way to protect access to the coast for the masses. And I'll read a little bit more of the letter that Nick Hale was reading that the Coastal Commission sent to San Diego when they were thinking about a similar proposal. And this is from June, sorry, July thirteenth, twenty eighteen. And it states from the Coastal Commission, quote, "As this office has stated before, this agency has generally interpreted local zoning ordinances in a broad fashion and found that short-term rentals or vacation rentals are a form of residential use permitted by right in any residentially zoned area unless such uses are specifically prohibited otherwise." So the Coastal Commission does have jurisdiction over this. They protect access to the coast for the masses. Putting an ordinance in place that requires a home sharing and not a un-hosted will, will just waste everybody's time, get sent back from the Coastal Commission and have us back here two years from now relooking at all of this again. So let's put some common sense regulations, three-night minimum, two persons per bedroom plus two, and limit the amount of permits per individual. That will prevent companies from coming in and buying up hundreds of houses and turning them into vacation rentals like people are so scared of. That's not what happens. But if you really want to prevent that, limit the amount of permits per person to one or two and you won't even have that possibility. These are some common sense things that have already passed at the Coastal Commission level in other cities and will pass here if we use common sense and be fair to vacation renters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bossom.
Okay. Kevin Hossith and then Andy Gumbiner.
Kevin?
Gumbiner.
Hi, good afternoon. Thanks for letting us speak. You know, I just want to address a couple of issues that I don't think other people have talked about. A lot of people have addressed money issues and how it affects the community in negative ways. But my opinion is I think that the shared economy is the future and that's what younger families look for in communities and short-term rentals can be incorporated within communities. And I hear a lot of complaints about the ability for Malibu to attract young families. We have two young toddlers and we would love to come move and live in Malibu. I know the community very well. I know the community very well and we unfortunately cannot afford a house in that area to send our kids to the school right now. But if there was an ability for us to short-term rental part of our house, home share in a way, that would allow us the ability. And I encourage and welcome more regulation and oversight. And I know a lot of other cities have a lot of success in being very strict about the way that they go about renting short-term rentals and allowing them to participate within the community and they have a very strict violation policy and they're very successful. And I understand there's a lot of people who have very strong opinions and feelings about short-term rentals because they may live next to a party house or they may live next to a house that's been turned into a hotel. But if you have very strict regulations and policy in place to prevent and shut that down, I think that it's very successful for the community and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathleen, next.
Next, we have Andy Gumbiner.
Mr. Gumbiner?
I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We've got you, yes, go ahead.
In short, I urge you to adopt the ordinance as drafted by your staff. It is a fair compromise that would preserve almost half of the apartments on Malibu Road as long-term rentals while at the same time provide much-needed visitor accommodations. I have owned my property on Malibu Road for thirty-one years and lived in it until I needed to move for work and family reasons. Unfortunately, moving back to Malibu is not an option for us. This means that requiring primary residency for multifamily STRs would make it impossible for me to continue enjoying the property with my family, something we can do in between visitors. I've long employed a property manager who lives nearby to ensure that property and visitors are closely monitored. In addition, I have strict rules in place. I limit the number of guests to two people per bedroom. I do not allow parties or events and I permit the use of my apartments only to confirm guests. As a result, I have never received a complaint from any of my neighbors. Furthermore, the proposed ordinance will maintain diversity in the Malibu housing market based on the makeup of the multifamily portion of Malibu Road. Allowing two STRs at each multifamily property would allow a maximum of forty-four STRs and a minimum of thirty-nine long-term rentals. That is the housing diversity Malibu wants and needs. Allowing STRs in multifamily properties will effectively reduce the incentive for owners to take buildings off the rental market and convert them to single-family homes or condominiums, thereby preserving some of those units as long-term rentals. If the house conversion trend were to continue at its current pace, there would be very few multifamily properties on the road in ten years. More affordable short-term rental options for visitors is a major concern of the Coastal Commission as it is the Coastal Act's mandate to maximize public access to the coast. Multifamily STRs offer a wider variety of options and price ranges to people who would otherwise not be able to afford to stay in Malibu. It is also important to consider the TOT income STRs generate. Annually, STRs add approximately two-point-four million dollars to the city's coffers. Now more than ever, the city desperately needs these funds. Lastly, I have heard there are some who believe STRs should only be allowed on a seasonal basis. This won't work for multifamily properties as they are now subject to statewide rent control and no-fault evictions. In other words, if a long-term tenant rents an apartment for six months and their, when their lease expires, it automatically converts to a month-to-month rental. This means the tenant has the right to stay in the apartment indefinitely. Therefore, the property owner could not commit to seasonal STRs. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen?
So we're basically back at the circling back, but if y'all indulge me a moment so I can just go through the list and double-check that we didn't have any duplicates.
Let me see if there's anybody I can reach. There's, while you're looking at the list. Ian Ballin, Bill Sampson, Ken Erlich were three that we missed early on. And Michael Lustig, Stuart Heller, Yelena, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the last name, and Rob, either Rob Allen or Rob Bauer are the ones that we need to pick up if we can.
Yes, okay, so let me just please eliminate the ones we've already received. And it'll take just a quick moment. That might help the it go a little more smoothly in just a minute. Okay, so I have it narrowed down. I believe we may have located Ken Erlich. He might be signed in under a different name. So if you are there, Mr. Erlich, if you'd like to please raise your hand.
I saw Kenneth raising his hand.
Yes, that's what I'm wondering if that.
There we go.
That's me. Kenneth iPad. Go ahead, Mr. iPad.
Thank you, Commissioner Jennings and members of the commission. I really appreciate you circling back as well for the folks who had trouble getting on earlier. I've testified before this commission and the city council a number of times on this issue. We represent Lily Reeves as trustee of the Sotira Trust. And unfortunately, our client has had terrible experiences with short-term rentals on either client, on either side of their home in recent years on repeated basis. There's been almost constant harassment, trespassing, physical property damage, significant issues, and almost no enforcement whatsoever, whether it's from code enforcement or the sheriff, et cetera. So number one, of course, we support the Santa Monica model that's being proposed. I appreciate, I heard the end of Mr. Hill's comments, which really called out the devils in the details, which I think is going to be important moving forward. And I would urge the commission and the council to pay attention to those details because I think they'll make a significant impact on enforcement. And while we're talking about enforcement, I think enforcement is especially key moving forward. Because unless the city's enforcement staff is bolstered significantly, I've heard up to two to three people would be appropriate. Unless those folks are actually hired and put to work, I think a lot of this is just going to be lip service and will really go to the wayside and won't be enforced and will be a bad experience frankly for all of Malibu. So the strict model that's being proposed with some detail and strict enforcement is certainly something that we would support. Thank you for your time. Thank you for consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ken. How are you doing, Kathleen? We got Bill Sampson, Ian Ballin, Michael Lustig, been able to turn him up?
Not so far, but I believe we're trying to contact him.
Stuart Heller?
Raise your hand if anybody heard their name called.
Jelena? Rob Allen or Rob Bauer?
I think it's Rob Allen. Hello?
Hello?
Mr. Rob Bauer.
Oh, alright.
Yes, alright, good. I figured, I have my nineteen-year-old son here and his girlfriend to help me figure it out. Thank you. Can you hear me okay now?
We can hear you, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Been a Malibu resident for thirty-two years. Our family's owned a property here. So semi-raised here, went to Point Two Elementary, and I certainly know the fabric of Malibu and would never want to do anything to jeopardize that. You know, we do do short-term rentals on our property and have so for the past couple of years. And we vet out everybody who makes an inquiry. And we make sure that the people who do want to stay with us are the right fit for the property. And we've never had a problem or a complaint. We've had perfect ratings because we are, I guess, what's called super hosts. And we make sure that not only that our clients have a great time, that they also enjoy Malibu. And we do an amazing job of emphasizing shopping in Malibu, spending time in Malibu, hiking in Malibu, and doing all the things that Malibu has to offer. In addition, my son was able to book surf lessons last week with a family that had the time of their life. We referred surfboard rentals to this local surf shops. Other instructors from the Malibu area have been able to take advantage of that. So we do pump money into the economy, but at the same time, we still love and use our property. But in the times that we don't, we do put it up, and it's a premium property, and it goes very quickly. And we make sure that, here again, that the clients are the right fit and that don't jeopardize anything in the city of Malibu. And I just want to say we're happy to work around any ordinance as you guys come up with. The onsite hosting would not work for our property. That would be quite restrictive, so that would certainly eliminate us doing it. And we hope that you'll take that into consideration and truly appreciate all of your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kathleen, we've got a few more.
Yes, we would like to see if maybe Ian Ballin is back or here. If you're here and can hear us, could you please raise your hand? Perhaps hasn't made it back.
Okay.
We can, Bill Sampson, did we successfully get him in? Bill Sampson, I'm not seeing.
And Michael Lustig?
Michael Lustig? I know we were attempting to reach him because he had expressed interest in speaking. I'm not sure that he's been able to get back in, but we're attempting to reach him.
Stuart Heller?
One other favor, I see one entry is just iPad, Malibu screen. Maybe if you could selectively unmute a couple of those, that might be kind of hiding someone who does want to speak that's on the list. There's like one, two iPads and then one Malibu screen that might have someone behind it trying to speak.
I see.
Malibu screen is the technician.
Oh, there you go. So the other, there are two iPad entries then that might be there.
You've got a different screen than I do.
Yeah, there's a couple of different views. It'd be kind of, I'm trying to find the Rob Bowers of the world who just don't quite know how to get on there.
See if we can find somebody.
All right, well, let me suggest this. While we're trying to locate the remainder of them, let me go back to some of the questions that were asked and give, direct them to staff. And maybe you can give some guidance to some of these responses while we're trying to see if the remaining speakers can be located. The Cedar and a number of people talked about exactly what does onsite mean. And maybe you can, it's pretty clear to me, but maybe you can make a definitive statement of what we're talking about, Bonnie.
Hi, everybody. In terms of onsite, what we were talking about would be on the same property.
So in other words, you would have to be living on the lot or wherever the main property is.
That's right.
Okay.
Right, and that was based on what, how we interpreted the city council's direction.
Okay. I know Mr. Roberts asked a question about whether there was any concern about unsafe conditions. I know that there were requirements for no code violations and so forth. Would you like to address that?
Unsafe conditions and that the property owner is responsible. Sorry?
No, I'm sorry, I go ahead.
The property owner is responsible to have in place all of the basic building code required features like smoke detectors and things like that to make the property safe. In terms of unsafe conditions, it's also a requirement that the property be in condition to rent so that the systemic system has to be operating and all of those types of things. I'm not sure if that answers the question or if Trevor wants or anybody else on staff wants to elaborate.
Well, I think that does it. Graham Clifford and others asked about well, actually, there were several questions based upon enforcement. What kind of enforcement would there be? What kind of record of enforcement problems have there been in the past? Has staff moved into that area? Or do you have any suggestions on what's, how that would be dealt with?
Um, in terms of enforcement, this, as the situation is today, the situation in the future will rely on a combination of methods. The Sheriff's Department will be responsible for any after-hours response for noise or parties or things like that. And then during the day, those calls would all get reported to code enforcement, and then our code enforcement staff would follow up with the short-term rental property owner during the day. We, the city also contracts with Host Compliance currently to monitor short-term rental online platform traffic. The city, I know it's been suggested that the city could change to a different provider. The city went through an RFP process in order to select Host Compliance previously, and they could go through the same process again to reassess options and things like that. The Host Compliance or whichever online monitoring platform we end up going with would provide contact information and a hotline for the, that would reach the short-term rental property owner so that that person could respond to problems on the property. We would also have the information for the, the contact information for the property owner available to provide to any neighbor who requests it. And let me see, is there anything else I should mention or that we should mention, Trevor or Liz?
I mean, I guess what I'd add is, in terms of current enforcement, there is no prohibition on short-term rentals in the city right now. So the city can't shut down short-term rental operators right now. They can only cite them for violations of noise ordinances or things like that. So there will be a significant difference when a, when an ordinance comes through. They could have consequences prohibiting someone from short-term renting in the future. And then if they're, you know, I don't know, we have to the council in terms of they're going to add more resources, you know, to assist in implementing the ordinance.
Okay, Trevor, while we're at it, just a second, Steve. While we're at it, is there do you want to weigh in? I'm not sure it's within our end, but do you want to weigh in on the issue of whether or not the matter should go to the code or what the thinking is about bringing the matter to the California Coastal Commission rather than simply adopting an ordinance?
Sure, I can talk about that briefly. I mean, it's not really before the commission here. The commission's here to provide advice on the proposed LCP amendment that the that the city council directed to be initiated. But you know, there's that great language in that trial court out of Santa Monica, but that you know, there's a couple of significant differences here. And the first one is they don't have an LCP. They have a land use, a land use program in place, but they don't have a local implementation plan. So without that, they don't have an LCP. And that decision deals with a CDP for the ordinance. So it's an apples and oranges sort of situation there. The other issue is that Santa Monica has always, always prohibited short-term rental use. It's always been their stance. It's never been allowed. That's not the situation in Malibu. And so in Malibu, where we allow short-term rentals right now, if we're going to change the uses allowed or the intensity of use, then it requires a local coastal program amendment. And that's why we need to go to the Coastal Commission.
Okay, so let me go back to Kathleen. Kathleen, have you been able to come up with any of the other speakers?
Well, we did get information that it didn't appear that Bill Sampson would be able to join us today, but I just wanted to call out one last time just in case.
Okay.
And from then, maybe just read off the names. A couple of people, Michael Lustig and Elchin Sadagov. We're working with Alex. It looks like they're there, but perhaps their audio, they're having difficulties with. So maybe if we call the others and see if that can be resolved in the end, if that works for you.
I'm losing you there, Kathleen.
So maybe we can, there's two that may be having audio difficulties. So we're going to look into seeing if maybe Alex can see if that, they're going to be able to be accommodated with their technical difficulties with the audio. But perhaps we could just go one last time through the few that are remaining and see.
We can do that. Ian Ballin, can you hear me at all? Bill Sampson apparently can't make it. Michael Lustig? Stuart Heller and Jelena. Last name starts with S.
Sponge it. And then it looks like Edith Morgan had added, was added at the last moment.
All right, have we got Edith Morgan?
Hear me?
Okay, we got you. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, well. Good, I had a really nice little talk put out, but as people have said different things, I have changed it. So the first thing I want to say is we need stronger laws to guide new people to ensure the enduring concept of Malibu. These laws have to have compliance officers for enforcement. Malibu has been plagued with weak or no power to enforce laws. Our laws have no teeth. So I want to emphasize that as Michael does, and I defer to him as my teacher in how to do this. And I certainly hope we don't go to coastal, though I don't know enough to tell you how to stop from doing that. I want to talk about neighborhoods. And nice strangers are guests. That is not the definition of a neighborhood. Neighborhoods recognize each other. I have people up on the hill behind me that wave at me, hi, good morning. And I'm in my backyard, my night gal. They're strangers to me. I've had neighbors, friends who are renting out their places, and they say, oh, Edith, don't do this, don't do that because I have paying customers. So it does affect me. We have gotten over the fact that we don't want those loud, noisy, yelling, screaming parties. But I want to reemphasize that strangers are not neighbors. Neighbors know each other. And Malibu is and should be a place of neighborhoods. I moved here only fifteen years ago. I'm a newcomer. And one of the things I have learned as I've been here is that things change. Things change, and aging is part of that change. And you have to look ahead and be responsible for your own income. I used to have sources of income such as the oil business, but now I have to look elsewhere. If people had depended upon rentals for them to be able to afford to live in Malibu, it's time to wake up and change. We all do have to give up things that we love. I have. Well, fifteen years ago, I gave up my home and moved here. Where am I? I did enforcement and change, and now I'm going to do strangers. And actually, this is a very good time to sell. I've told that the property values have gone up because of the virus. I think I'm going to let y'all go because I'm so late in talking and so discombobulated by what everybody else said.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Steve, I was about to close the public hearing, but if you have something.
Well, just, there were two questions that were asked that we didn't get answered.
Well.
The public cast.
Why don't, why don't we just close the public hearing? I was thinking maybe we could take like a five-minute break and then.
But why don't we just ask those, answer those questions?
Ask, all right, fine, Steve, go ahead.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Chair. I hate to interrupt, but I'm not sure that Lawrence Stuppi got his chance to speak, and he is on the list.
Who?
Lawrence Stuppi.
Okay, bring him on.
Mr. Stuppi, are you there?
It could be Larry S.
If you're Larry S, please raise your hand.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
We can hear somebody.
Yes. Yes.
Larry S, there we go.
All right, I thought you forgot about me. Anyway, the main problem I see here is you're not enforcing current laws or hurting common sense. You're trying to make a big law that's going to damage everybody instead of punishing those few that are causing the problem. We've been, I've had this house in the family for since 1948. We have 25 owners on the house and I maintain and manage the property for them for their use. We use the short term rentals in order to pay the taxes, insurance and stuff, much as $60, $70,000 a year in costs. I do the manager and want to be considered the natural person since we don't allow any of the other people to live at the house because we don't want to share it with others while we're living there unless they're invited. The SPR's ordinance could have an adverse effect on the environment and therefore would require to go through the Coastal Commission. And also it results in the loss of the family property if you allow this ordinance to go through. If we cannot maintain the cost of the property, we are unable to use it ourselves and therefore may be forced out of Malibu, which is a travesty. It could do irreparable harm to our family. And it's punitive and unreasonable, a lot of the things that are going in. Take care of the problems that you're having problems with. We do have someone who's local. You don't want to turn Malibu into a bed of breakfast or an A B and B, and this ordinance will do that by taking away the rights of owners to rent their property out on their own without undue rules and regulations. This disorder's ordinance denies the reasonable and fair use of our private property. We are on a private road and we don't bother anybody else with our ourselves or our short term rentals. And we've been renting it out short and long term, at least for 50 years before Malibu became a city. You need to enforce existing laws and not make more laws that are just going to hurt people. All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stuppi. All right, so Steve.
He just, yeah, one of the questions that was asked by one of the speakers was why does this ordinance we're talking about tonight have to go to the Coastal Commission? Were the interim ordinance that's going to the city council does not have to go to the Coastal Commission? If they're both changing the rules, I think we should get an answer to that. And, you know, additionally, maybe Bonnie would like to explain why, what's going to be different in the explanation for compliance she just spoke about from what we've got going on now?
Well, until, can we, can we hold those until I can close the public hearing? And then we can bring those those questions out. They're all part of the debate that we're going to have. John?
Yeah, since counsel wanted us to talk to use less, Mr. Lustig is a consultant. Hopefully on our break, we can try to get ahold of him and reopen it if they can find him.
If 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 we can find him, then there's then one of you can ask him questions if you want to do that. Chris?
I just wanted to point out, there is a submission from anonymous that in their submission, it was one of the combined correspondence batch two. It's like the second item in there, page three. They have asked if we can read this out loud, I presume as part of the public comment. Since they're acting, prefer to act anonymously, what what's kind of our policy here? This looks like more than three minutes, but I just wanted to call this out.
If if we have, the idea is to provide input to the commission, not necessarily to provide a forum for speeches to the public. So if it comes, if it's been written and it's been submitted to us, then it's it's been done. I don't think there's any any particular point in going forward and reading it out to the public at large.
Okay, I just, I wanted to check the policy, yeah.
Let's let's check, if we're going to take a break, let's check that. I I think we did have a provision for submitting written comments to be read, so let me.
If I stand corrected, then let's, let's take a break for for until, let's say, 25 minutes of nine. How's that sound? Is that all right?
Thank you, yeah.
All right, we'll be in recess until then, turn off your, since we haven't closed the public hearing, obviously no comments can be received, but you're not talking to anybody anyway, so.
Yes, please don't talk to anybody and and please, please don't talk to anyone during the break and then turn off your video and sound.
Thank you.
Okay, we got.
It's like Steve is just coming on, there we go.
There he is. And John is there, one, two, three, four. Who are you missing? Oh. Mr. Wild, where are you?
He is online. He's just on mute.
I am here.
There we go. All right, so we'll come back to order. I think at this point, Kathleen, can you hear me?
Yes, Chair, I can.
Bonnie, we got John, Kathleen, anybody, any of the missing children shown up?
No one so far, and the ones that are, we don't believe will be materializing, with the exception of Michael Lustig, who we were attempting to reach. And like you mentioned before, perhaps he can be called for questions if we fail to be able to get ahold of him.
Exactly, we'll, we'll have commissioners calling for questions if and when you can make contact with him. So if there are no other speakers on the item, we'll close the public hearing at this point.
Trevor, what was your decision on if that can be read, the anonymous letter?
Oh. Sorry, press the on button there. Thank you. I I was mistaken. It was an earlier draft that we considered doing that and we do not allow things to be submitted, be read into the record. You just submit email correspondence and I believe that that was submitted and circulated to the commissioners as question marks. You did receive it, right?
Yes, I did receive it. So, yeah, if for reference, it's in that batch two that Kathleen put together this afternoon.
Okay.
And that will become part of the record ultimately, so it's represented.
Right, so we're closing the public hearing. At this point, we're back at the commission table for questions of staff, comments, suggestions as to how the ordinance might be improved. Who would like to begin? I saw Chris's hand first.
I beat you, John. So I just did want to get a little kind of come back around to the response about the the one question that came up probably four times, that onsite clarification. I know Bonnie, you clarified on property. I mean, now, if I'm going to take a very loose interpretation of that, could that be the owner of the property in their car on the property, you know, at the corner of the lot? I mean, that's on property. Do they have to be sleeping in the house? They have to have access to facilities, you know? It just seems like there's a lot of wiggle room in that definition.
Um, we, I want to just pull up the definition, so. We tried to make it not unclear and not easy to work around. Let's see. List on site means maintains a physical presence on the property, including but not limited to sleeping overnight, preparing and eating meals and being present on the property each day of the short term rental as required by the hosted short term rental permit. And then if we refer to.
That says physically onsite from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM for the the STR language. I mean, that still doesn't answer the question because physically onsite would quote being in your car in the corner of the lot would qualify for that term, how I'm reading.
But you have to, but the the, in order to qualify the hosted short term rental, the person has to eat and sleep there, prepare meals. This, it's not just park your car in the driveway and hang out.
Okay.
Be present on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, John?
Well, I I just want to suggest.
Sorry, you're down low on the screen. I can't see you, Steve. Go ahead, Sean.
Can't see me? Oh. First, I'd like to get a better explanation of why we can have an interim ordinance of the commission. And then we have to take our permanent ordinance. Why can't we just have an interim ordinance forever and not take it to the Coastal Commission?
Trevor addressed this a little while ago in his comments, but and I'll and I'll refer it back over to him. But it has to do with the amount of change that's being proposed in the this LCP amendment and zoning tax amendment that's before you tonight that requires a host to be on the property as compared to the other ZTA 1702 that's going to the council on August 10th. Trevor, do you want to elaborate again?
Sure, I want to be careful here. You know, the interim ordinance is not noticed for tonight, so I don't want us to get down a rabbit hole discussing that. And again, the whether an LCP is required or necessary is not really here either. That's been initiated by the council, you know, so. that's been initiated by the council, you know, so we should focus on that ordinance itself and improvements to be made to it, but just briefly, the interim ordinance is designed to memorialize current uses and then impose a regulatory scheme to limit impacts and nuisance issues that have developed in the city or been reported. That's the purpose of it, so there's not a change of use or intensity of use in that ordinance. But again, we didn't notice that tonight, I, I don't want to get into a big discussion about the interim ordinance.
Well, I want to know so we can decide what to do on this one, and, and I read through our LCP cover to cover, and I didn't find one mention ever of any single word mentioned short-term rental. So, and then we got comments back this afternoon from the coastal commission, and all they did was add, they didn't take anything or change anything, except one thing, which they've already approved, and that is they're changing our rules on guesthouses, which they've already approved our rules, but we're changing.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, I would, I just wanted, I got two things, one, Trevor, the answer on why we're not taking the interim ordinance to the coastal commissions, is there language somewhere in the LCP, I mean, if, if, there's a minimum amount of stuff you have to change, or maximum amount of stuff you have to change before it's going to go to the coastal commission? Because the answer you just gave us tonight is different than the answer I got from you and Christie when I spoke to you this afternoon. Totally different answer, so that, you ought to clear that up because it's different. And then Bonnie, I'd like to go back to this compliance or the enforcement. Everything you said about the future enforcement program seems to be what we have today. So maybe if you could sort of separate what, what is going to be new in this thing, it would be helpful, because I didn't understand what was going to be new to fix it.
Let's go to Trevor first. Bonnie, let's go to Trevor first.
Sure, I, I, I'm not sure what's different, you know, I think that was the same thing that we were talking about this afternoon, Steve.
Oh, it was a different answer, Trevor, just get, what's right, what is the right answer?
I'm not sure if you can, what, I don't know what you're referring to, again.
I'll give you the, I'll give you the answer that Christie gave me this afternoon that you were on the meeting with.
Yep.
Okay, and the answer was that we're going to take a chance with the interim ordinance. It may have to go to the coasted, but we're willing to risk not taking it there because we don't think it's going to be that big a deal. We're on the orders we're talking about now, which I, we're going to, I don't know why we're not taking a chance on that, but we're, we're betting that it's not, the coastal commission is not going to come back to us on that one. So it should go to the coastal commission. We just made a, I guess, a legal decision or some decision that we're not going to do that. Is that not what we talked about today?
Well, I would disagree with your characterization there, and again, we really can't get into a big debate about the interim.
Trevor, it was a question that somebody asked, it's a valid question, and we should get an answer for it.
What, you need, let me just, I, I just want to.
Yeah.
Put it, put it out there, okay, so the, the interim ordinance has the same proposals about the multifamily, and the multifamily is, you know, is similar to here, what's being proposed tonight. And in that, you know, that's a, that is memorialization of the fact that hotel and motel use is prohibited in the city, but it's very hard for us to enforce that without specific regulations about it. So, you know, it's a, you know, there may be ways to debate about that, but in this case, the, the significant change to how the non-multifamily residential zoning is, is put through here, you know, that's the issue, is the change of use there and the intensity of use there, which is the significant difference between the two ordinances, and why one is a memorialization of our current practice with the new regulatory scheme, and one is, you know, requiring an LCP amendment to deal with the, the change in intensity.
Forty-five minute meeting with you and Christie this afternoon was an entirely.
Let's talk about some things that we actually have some control over.
No, look, Jeff, if we're going to get honest answers, we should get honest answers. And that's all I want.
Things that we can't control, we're not the city council, I know you think you are, but you're not.
No. So, it's, it's, look, I'm trying to make sure that we understand what the hell we're voting on and what we're trying to do. And like I said, I spent forty-five minutes with Christie this afternoon, go, and Trevor was on the call, asking some of these questions, and I'm getting different answers tonight, that's not right. Okay, that's not right, so go ahead, and Bonnie, if you can explain the difference in compliance.
Bonnie, you?
Okay, the ordinance before you tonight puts in place a whole new regulatory scheme that we don't have today. The things that I mentioned earlier are a lot of the same things that we have and that we operate with today, but the difference with this new regulatory scheme is that people that are going to do short-term rentals will have to get a permit in order to do that, they'll have to get that permit renewed annually, and if they don't follow the requirements of the ordinance, they're subject to a couple of different things, either not getting the permit renewed, or getting it denied, or getting it revoked, in which case they would not be eligible to apply again for, I believe it's six months, another six, or it's either six months or a year. So there would be a period of time after a denial or revocation where that, that person and that property could not be operating short-term rentals, so that's a big difference from today. Another thing is that it specifies a lot of specific requirements for short-term rental operators, and that also plays into the, the permit approval scheme and the potential for revocation. It lists the types and numbers of citations that people could get before they're subject to revocation. We don't have any of those tools in place today. And then there was one other thing I was going to mention, the fines are significant compared to the typical citations that code enforcement is able to issue, so these all packaged together provide a lot more tools in the toolbox for city code enforcement to use. And I also wanted to clarify that, there's been a lot of comments made about code enforcement not doing its job, or the city not enforcing its rules, and there's just, that's, that's really not accurate. There are only certain things that, that, that code enforcement can respond to, code enforcement cannot enter a property, code enforcement is not the same as the sheriff, code enforcement follows up on every complaint that they receive, and they use every tool that they have to resolve that complaint or resolve that violation if there's a violation. There have been challenges working with the sheriff's department as far as getting responses to noise complaints and things like that. We are working on building a better relationship and team with the sheriff's department so that there are specific staff at the sheriff's department that understands what our requirements are once we get them in place, and they will be able to respond more effectively. So I think all of those things together will make for a different enforcement scheme and more effective protection of neighborhood character and things like that compared to the tools and things that we have today.
Okay, so the question is this, I've got, a house next to me is having a party, and it's 11 o'clock at night. I got a problem, who do I call, and how fast does somebody get there, under the new scheme?
Under the new scheme, noise complaints are, are today and, if they're after hours, today and in the future will be handled by the sheriff's department. Doug is already working with the sheriff's department to be, to develop this better collaboration and things like that, there's been a lot of changes at the sheriff's department, we, we've had to start and stop a lot of this cooperative effort so far, just because of changes in staffing and things like that. So we're, that is underway again, I can't answer the question about like how quickly the sheriff's department could get there. It's always a matter of priorities too, you know, depending on staffing and things like that, but that's all in the works based on, or depending on what the city council decides to move forward with.
Okay, so we don't have a real tight plan how it's going to improve, but okay.
Our job tonight is to.
No, but we do, we have a, we have, we do have a tight plan, but this is a whole different scheme.
The question is, I mean, look, from a user perspective, the question is, I've got noise going on next to me, I want to go to sleep. And how fast, if I have a complaint, how fast can somebody get there to help me solve that problem?
Is there something you want to add to this ordinance that would help you solve that problem?
No, I'm trying to find out what, what we've got planned so far.
But our job is to, is to critique this ordinance and to try to give the city council our guidance.
I am trying to critique it because I'm trying to understand what's in it.
Yeah, all right, well, there's nothing about what you're talking about, is there, so let's, can we go forward?
That's the problem, isn't it?
Can we go forward?
Yeah, no, I would suggest we go forward page by page and, and.
I'm right with you, John.
And everything, now I still do not understand how, not a single thing about short-term rentals is in our coastal plan, but we're assuming that, that we don't have to change it because it's minor, but, but we're going to change it and it's major. And what I really, the really, I'm asking this question is, eighteen months ago, the city council abandoned everybody in Malibu by saying we would not enforce anything essentially, we don't have any rules. Now, we're in a situation where you're telling us that we're going to pass a, a, a LCP amendment, and if, and we're also going to pass another set of rules that are different, and if the LCP amendment never comes back, these interim rules last forever, or if they both get declared, they should go to coastal, we have zero protection again. And in the meantime, we've received information that a court has ruled we don't have to go to them. So, and, and it's my opinion that, that we can draft a municipal court ordinance, and we can leave it up to the council to decide whether they want to go to coastal.
That's a good idea, let's leave it up to council, and let's go back to the draft that we have, that we're supposed to be looking at. Let's start with exhibit B, this is on page of the, of the staff report, this is the municipal code ordinance, so let's go through that first. It's, it's the, the LCPA sort of hangs on this, so let's start with that, that first page, and let me ask if there's somebody who wishes to comment on anything on that first page.
I'd like to go back a little bit further in the staff report if I could, Jeff, Jeff, I'm sorry, all right, I mean, this is.
Let me know when you're ready to do the job that we're supposed to be doing.
I'm doing the job we're supposed to be doing, I, back to page eight of 11, the staff report. Page eight of 11 says the LCPA memorizes the short-term rental use as allowed in residential zones as it currently is. Word in, in the LCP is identified that we can, that the short-term rentals are allowed under our LCP, I couldn't find that in place. That's what it says, I'm just trying to figure out the basis that we're using to make these decisions.
Yeah, and, and just to, just to kind of clarify that or put a point on it in terms of what's in the LCPA, I think it's appendix B or table B, the same one we've referenced for change here. It, you know, the closest thing is to bed and breakfast, and it does say explicitly no business use in residential zone, so that, that's another question I had had.
Well, I would like to, I'd like to.
Let, let Trevor, let Bonnie or Trevor answer my question, Jack, you would please.
Trevor.
Um, as, Trevor, do you want to do this?
Hey Bonnie, I'll, I'll jump in if you, if you want also.
Okay, so the city has a TOT ordinance in place, it has allowed short-term rentals in residential zones for a very long time, and short-term rentals aren't explicitly identified one way or the other in the zoning code or in the LCP. Part of the, part of what this, these amendments are accomplishing is clarifying that long-term practice that the city and the city council have always allowed. And so amending the LCP permitted uses is part of that task.
I'm just saying, where's, where, where is, is it memorialized in the LCP, we can do that today, that's, that's what the staff report says. I'm just trying. There you are.
Where, the interim ordinance is not in front of us today, but it, it, it does not make the same level of changes in land use that the ordinance in front of you today does, that's why it's paired with an LCP amendment.
No, no, I'm trying to figure out where in the staff report it says this is currently memorialized somewhere in the LCP. I'm just trying, where is that? So I can find that, so I'll find that.
Well, and if I can try to paraphrase, what I, what I'm, what I'm guessing is that since we have allowed it kind of by default, even though it's not explicitly there, it's allowed, but then it's still not in the LCP, right? I mean, just to be clear, there's no language that explicitly says this type of use is allowed in residential zone, but sorry, Trevor, is that, I just see if that's right.
No, you, question marks, you, you mean, you're, you're right on it, you know, I mean, there's nothing in there that says you can rent out your place long-term either, you know? And so the city council made a choice, you know, probably a decade plus ago, when this short-term rental issue started bubbling up on the hosting platforms and it got more popular, and the choice was, you know, it, are you allowed to rent out your place? Is that included in part of what residential use is? And for that short-term or long-term, it was considered to be allowed, and the council decided they wanted to, you know, they wanted to go and enforce and collect the TOT that they hadn't been, you know, gathering from those hosting platforms and from a lot of properties there, and they moved forward with that, and that's their interpretation, other cities have, have taken a stance that, you know, we've never allowed it, and short-term rental use is different from long-term rental use, and we prohibit it, and it's not listed in our code, and, and that's the way they went. But the city council here made a, a different choice about how they were going, and that's how, you know, we've been in, you know, once we, we adopt that, that's how our code is interpreted, you know, that's where we are on this review that are allowed in the city.
And that was a decision the city council made, when did they make that decision? Was that a vote of the city council?
There are a number, there are, there are a number of votes that have been dealt with and collecting the TOT that have acknowledged it over the years.
The vote that said we want to allow short-term rentals, when was that taken?
I, I, I don't have a number of reports in front, I, I get, you know, I, I, I've, you know, this is, this, I mean, we, we're all in this situation here, we know short-term rentals are allowed in the city, you know, how that was established, you know, there was a number of decisions from the city council of the years, if that could be pulled up, if we went the research on that, you know, I, I don't know else to tell you, but, you know, they're allowed here under registration, it's been allowed for a long period of time, you know, that's the situation in the city.
And, and here's my problem, all right, that, that I don't agree with you, all right? I mean, you guys made, the, the conversation we had today is the legal staff made a decision that because the city council didn't go in another direction, okay? There, there was some rule, there were some decisions that we're going to allow short-term rentals, and you ignored all of the other rules that we have in the city that talk about protecting neighborhoods, protecting the quality of life, and, and none of those things were considered as you guys move forward looking at whether these things are allowed. And the problem I had is, look, we're spending $900,000 a year on legal fees, that's what we're spending. And you would think that for that kind of money, all right, we could get some help in trying to figure out how we solve this problem for the residents that are currently suffering through all these short-term rentals, versus coming up with a program that says, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to send it to the coastal commission, may come back in a year, may come back in two years, we've got another ordinance, and probably does a lot of the same changes, but we don't have to send that one because that, none of this stuff.
Let's get to the work we're supposed to be doing, is that all right? Can we just talk about the ordinance we're supposed to be?
Okay, I would, I would like to start, by the way, the coastal act does not allow the coastal commission to preclude long-term rentals.
Okay, let's, let's go forward, John, what is it, we, we get along, what, what would you like to come?
I'd, I'd like to go on attachment one. Okay, and I would like to.
We start with exhibit B, it's the more detailed section.
I want to have the whole purpose of this meeting established, and attachment one is the ZTA. I think we, we received, we received a, a, a court decision in the interim since the coastal, the city.
All right, that, that attachment B is the ZTA. Are you looking at the ZTA or are we looking at the resolution?
I'm looking at city, city, I'm looking at attachment one, one, zero. Okay, now.
Do you know what we're talking about, Bonnie? I, I want to be sure we're on the same.
Planning Commission Resolution Number 20-35.
The resolution.
Okay, the resolution.
Yeah.
The, but Commissioner Martin, the resolution has two exhibits, it has an exhibit A and exhibit B, are you wanting to look at the resolution itself or?
I want to start with the resolution.
Okay, let's go, John, what is it you want to say about the resolution?
Okay, on the resolution, on line four, I want to cross out the word, after the word adopt, I want instead of local coastal program, I want to put Albu Municipal Code, okay? And then on page.
I'm sorry, where was that again, John?
Fourth, fourth line down.
It's in the header of attachment one. It's in the header of attachment one, uh, just in the the block at the top in all caps.
Title, okay.
Okay. Put in Malibu Municipal Code instead of local coastal plan. Then on. Uh, page two, section two. I want to put. The the city's home sharing orders is a valid exercise in the city. No, the city of Santa Monica versus Diane Hayek. As appeal, the court found, the city home sharing ordinance is valid exercise of the city's. Police powers and is not preempted by the coastal act and does not require coastal development permit.
Okay, so so the thrust, the thrust of what we're talking about now is that you think that we should not, we should, we should not recommend that the. City council adopt the LCPA, but only that we adopt the the uh.
MMC, ZTA.
Is that where you're going with this?
If that's what you want, then you should just ask to, we can, we can bring it, bring this back with, there'll be a number of changes that would have to be made.
But let's, let's.
We can make those changes.
No, no, but let's, let's, let's go forward. Wait, wait, John, let's see if there, let's see if you've got the three votes. Let's just take a little straw poll on those who agree that we should not, we should recommend that the city council not adopt. The uh, the LCPA. All right. So Chris, what do you think about that?
Can I add one thing?
No, let's let's get, let's get it going here. Chris.
Yeah, so I mean, just to kind of play this through, if we did just do a ZTA, and so the MMC changes only. We still have the LUP as it stands, which has no call out to short term rentals. But the ZTA has short term rentals all over the place with that. Set up some type of conflict? I mean, would we be um going down any odd path there? I mean, otherwise, you know, that'd be my first question.
Exactly the same as Santa Monica is in right now. Exactly.
Okay.
The 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 difference is Santa Monica does not have an LCP in place, so.
It has an LUP and it doesn't, and this does.
They don't have an implementa implementation plan, which is how we have the rules and laws that are.
This is an issue for the city council. This is not an issue for us to decide. If we decide that we do not want to recommend that the city council proceed with the with the LCP amendment. The city council will either ignore us, which I can assure you that they ought to. Uh, and and if they if they decide that, oh, yeah, you're right, we should do that, then they can do that on their own. But but it. It's not really within our, within the level of what we're trying to do tonight.
All we have to do is change one paragraph in the resolution. We have to pass the resolution tonight.
All right, and I'm looking to see whether there are three votes in favor of of telling the city council what they ought to do in this regard.
Well, that that's why I was asking my question. So that that's the first obvious one that comes to mind. Because I mean, just in terms of how this is written, we introduce a whole lot of new language in our zoning text. And I just didn't know if there's kind of precedent or what have you. Uh, and I guess I turn to Trevor for an answer on that one.
Sure. Issue is if if you don't include an LCP amendment and you need one, then your zoning code's not going to be enforceable.
And if you don't.
The changes would not be enforceable if an LCP amendment is required and we don't go through with it.
How do we know if it's required? Who? I mean, if we got a second opinion.
Well, I I if I can put it another way, since our LCP explicitly, well, doesn't explicitly address this. But there's an, we've been going through an interpretation of that LCP for the last five or 10 years. Effectively, what I'm interpreting, John is saying, is let's clarify what our new interpretation is through his own, through his own text amendment. And then if needed, uh, LCPA could be done at a later date, you know? Again, kind of touching now on where Steve is going, then I think it kind of makes sense because it would all be, what are the conditions that lead to that requirement for LCP change? And that's what I think Steve and John are both challenging, you know, is it like, where is the kind of bright line in the law that says, when you change this? Because we've already changed a lot from our quarter last five or 10 years without those LCP changes.
And as as Norm, Norm said, we direct our municipal code and how we run things, how we regulate things, not coastal.
Well, and sorry, go ahead.
And we have a court opinion in the case of Santa Monica that says it's none of their business. So if we approach this as we're going to change our code and follow it, we're not changing one word of our plan. One word.
So I take it Steve and and John and and Chris are in favor of 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 advising the city council. Uh, not to adopt the amendments, right?
I'm in favor of understanding this right now, right? Well, and and what part of what comes to mind for me is just another, another base, oh, sorry, Jeff, if you want to call Bonnie, please do.
Bonnie.
Um, I I was going to make a suggestion that without committing to your position on whether the LCPA should move forward or not. Would you be interested in just in the event the council decides that they want to move forward with the LCP amendment? Do you want to just evaluate that and make your comments on that? And then also include in your resolution something that says, if there's the majority that agrees with this, that you don't believe it's necessary. And that way we can get off of this topic and move through the whole thing in front of us tonight.
Well, that's what I was trying to do with my language. All the council has to do is change paragraph section three. Period.
But it's the, what I.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
No, uh, well, I I think you, that's fine.
No, I think you're right. I think we've got to give the council some choices, all right? I think there's a strong sense up in the planning, at least what I hear so far. Look, we got to get this problem fixed. And and the plan that we're running right now says, I have no idea. When we're going to get a resolution of this that's going to deal with the short term rental issue. I got people over the weekend sending me videos of the people next door to them in a short term rental peeing in their front yard. That's wrong. That's not what we're supposed to be doing for the residents in Malibu. So I think, so I think, just I think John's issue that sort of says, here's a short term way to get there. I think we got to take a look at that, and then I don't have a problem going back on Bonnie's issue and taking a look at the ZTA in case they want to go to that path.
And and I want to bring up a point. We got a comment back from the coastal commission. It agreed basically with everything. It just added language that we don't have to ask for. It's not in there. We have an approved plan. But what it did is add something they wanted that's already in our plan. We are not asking them to make guest houses legal residences because they're banned in Malibu. But they're, they want to do it. So you're opening up this to the coastal commission to change anything they want.
Yeah, and 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 your opinion and the three of you and 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 all of us have the same opinion with regard to what the city council decides to do. That any of the other residents who have spoken tonight have. Uh, I don't really think that this is something that the city council has asked us to do to opine on whether or not they should go forward with this at all. But if you want to to come back with a resolution that says, we think that it's a bad idea to go to the coastal commission with this. That's fine. That's fine. I have no problem with it.
Do we need to write that language? I was going to write it with just that one paragraph. You want to write some other language? Fine.
Well, there are other aspects of that, of that, of that exhibit A that you may want to comment on. Uh, you know, there are others, there are other aspects, instead of just saying, no, we don't think you ought to do it, forget the whole thing. Maybe you want to look at exhibit A and see whether there are any of the definitions that you want to change or if any. Language uses that you might want to consider as a possible alternative, something that you might want to do.
And and I did have some some input on that for sure. I mean, I I'm not saying I don't want to follow the guidance of um of council. I'm just saying that I, you know, I I want to try to give the best input we can as a body. And I don't think by totally skipping this and not doing it is going to help anyone. But I think, you know, just expressing that we that we're uncomfortable really making a change of the LCP when we've got something defensible already. You know, so I'm good with going through exhibit A for sure.
Well, I want to point out, I want to point out that everything in exhibit A is in exhibit B.
Exactly, which is why I wanted to start with exhibit B in the first place, but.
Exactly, that's why we could.
Can we do that now? Can we go to exhibit B?
Exactly.
Great. I don't like to half an hour. Um, now at exhibit B, let's start with 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 that first page of exhibit B, Municipal Code Title Seventeen. Changes, proposals, sexual suggestions on that that first page, anything?
Yes.
Okay, what?
Number one, the definition of a bedroom. Okay, it says a bedroom is seventy square feet. You can take your living room if it's uh. Two hundred eighty square feet and put in four walls and you got four more bedrooms. Okay, it's a ridiculous number. Uh, seventy square feet, you can barely get a bed in there. So are we trying to allow people to fill houses with bedrooms to have more people? Or are we trying to be reasonable?
Bonnie, is there a building code definition of bedroom? Is there something? Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, so this is designed to track with the building code and the wastewater department. Um, definition that they rely on for what a bedroom is. So we didn't, I didn't want you to think that we picked seventy square feet out of the air. That's where that comes from. Um. And then occupancy, keep in mind occupancy for short term rentals is also limited by other provisions in the ordinance based on the bedroom count. Um, so bedrooms uh have to track with the wastewater and um occupancy. You can't, you cannot just add an infinite number of bedrooms to your property. Um, occupancy is capped out for a short term rental of any size.
Well, I I want to ask you this. When we did the house on uh, the colony. We went through how they defined bedrooms, and there was no seventy square feet in there. It was uh adjacent to a bathroom. Okay, it has nothing to do with size. And I never.
I'm just telling you where we we checked with the building official and with environmental health. And this is the language that they they gave us.
Okay, so every house we see from now on, if it's got a seventy square foot room, we should count it as a bedroom for parking. Right? Or anything, any.
You don't, parking for residential development isn't based on bedrooms. There's just two enclosed and two unenclosed.
So but every time we come up with the and the count of bedrooms, we're going to use seventy square feet. That's, that doesn't seem.
All all you have to do is. Environmental health will take care of the wastewater in in terms of bedroom count.
Okay, now, but I want to add one more thing to that. If you guys want to go along with seventy, it's nuts, but it's fine. But we have another definition in our definitions of ancillary rooms. And those are non habitable. So I want to add, so we don't count non habitable ancillary rooms as bedrooms. I want to add, and it's not an ancillary room to the end of that that paragraph.
It it already, the definition already says habitable space. Is that something, are you?
Well, because they're talking about seventy square feet, you can take a closet, which is an ancillary room, and make it a bedroom. So I just want to make sure those two definitions follow each other.
Well, the the definition of ancillary space is is already in the municipal code. This just talks about new definitions that are being added or changed, okay? The definition of ancillary space is already in there, it's already in there.
And maybe, maybe, sorry, go ahead.
This is also the same definition that um the city of Santa Monica uses for bedroom in their ordinance.
But do you want a conflict between the two? That's what I'm saying. We're trying to define these these things. And if ancillary room, but room is not a habitable space, then should we have it as a bedroom?
A bedroom is only habitable space. If an ancillary room is defined as non habitable space, then it's not a bedroom.
Okay, we we'll leave that unclear then, okay? Uh, I would like to add um. Under the next one, booking transaction, after natural person, I I would add. In in that string of different things, associations, clubs, companies, blah, blah, I would like to add broker. Because that is the most unlikely person to handle this transaction. And we don't have that in this definition. And that's not, should not be a controversial change. A broker takes a commission.
A a broker is either a natural person or a joint venture or a joint stock company or a partnership or an association or a club or a company. Corporation or a business trust or an organization of any. You you that's that's intended a little excessively to me, but it's intended to cover the waterfront on any type of person, animal or thing.
Except a person who normally handles that transaction, as I mentioned.
How would you have a broker who was not fall within, not be either a natural person or one of those other things?
Okay, uh. Well, why would you put in all those other things and not have a broker is my question.
It's what the broker is going to operate as. They'd operate as an individual, natural person or operate as those others. I I think that that looks okay. It's just to, you know, the broker would be a company or a person or other. I I I think that looks okay for who is doing it.
Okay, I don't think you've got three, John, but let's let's see if we can take a straw poll if you want, but but.
Go ahead. I'm just trying to clarify things.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the next one, designated operator. Do we need to, and this is a question, do we need to to put in the language about them having to live on the property?
God, John, can I just, before you get to, I would like to totally eliminate the concept of a designated operator. One of the things that we've talked about in all and all the planning commission meetings I've been at is that. A property that's hosted by a neighbor, where the neighbor is there who understands the neighborhood, understands the neighborhood character. Understands all, you know, the who the neighbors are, works. When you bring somebody in who is not of that same ilk, that's where the problems start. And a designated operator falls into that category. They don't know the neighborhood. They don't know the.
Okay, okay, we're good. Let's, 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 I I, Chris, you want to speak up, speak to that?
Yeah, I know, um, I know, uh, Michael Lustig, he spent a lot of time on this and just kind of looking through what he had submitted on this one. Um, uh, just for a little bit of of input from there. Um, he was saying that the designated operator could be, say, in a multi unit, someone who is a tenant living on site, which. I think in in terms of what we're trying to cover here does make sense to me, but I think for um, kind of that single family use. Um, I agree that like, there has to be somebody who is a long term tenant in the structure. And I think in a multi, that could work, in my opinion. Um, but I think on a, on a, on a single, a single family rental, um, HSTR. Um, I think the concept, it should be the owner there, and there would be no applied designated owner to those.
Okay, the only reason I'd weigh in on this is that my understanding is that the city council was pretty specific about. Wanting this provision in there. Now, we can tell the city council that they shouldn't do what they distinctly told us they wanted. But that doesn't seem to be a profitable use of our time.
Well, I'm trying to remember the guidance was also, I think John called it out, was that the city was, in effect, in the staff report. It says that they've been partnering with, the staff has been partnering with Michael Lustig for input. Since he isn't available apparently today to weigh in on this, I didn't want to lose that input because we were guided to leverage that.
Well, Jeff, I understand what you're saying, and this is why I think it can be solved by saying they have to live on site. This just says a designated operator. They can be from Mars.
How long they have to live on site, John?
While.
How long do they have to be living on site?
As the property.
How long do they have to be living there to get to know the neighborhood?
It 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 doesn't, I don't see that there's any definition of how long they have to be living there. What I, what I'm thinking of is, for example, what 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 I understood the city council be responding to. Was a suggestion of people who would want to go away for a period of time. Like many people, when they go on vacation, have a house sitter. They have somebody to take care of the property, who lives on the property. And who takes care of the place while they're gone. And it seemed to me that that was what they were trying to angle for now.
That's not what this, that's not what this does.
This doesn't do that. This is my point. My point.
That's the problem.
My point is that all we have to do to do that, Jeff, is to, is that they have to be required to live on site.
But there is a requirement, it's just not in that paragraph. It's later on, which was, Bonnie, go ahead, Bonnie.
I'm sorry. Um, the designated operator, if you look at number four, it says lives on site. At any dwelling unit offered for use as a hosted short term rental for the duration of the rental. So there's a definition, the definition for lives on site is um a little bit later on page two. And it doesn't.
I think you're overstating it, Bonnie, because what this, when you read the whole paragraph, it says designated operator. Means any natural person who is authorized by the owner of a short term rental unit two, colon, one, two, three, four. So it's a, if you take out one, two and three, what it says is is the, it's a, is a person who was authorized by the short owner of a short term rental unit to live on site. All right.
Duration of the rental.
Simply change, if you simply change that to has agreed to instead of authorized. So you have the commitment from the person to do it, not just that he's been authorized to do it.
How long are they living there? How long, how long do you have to be a designated operator and live in the neighborhood? To get to the same level of understanding as somebody who has lived there for twenty years?
The answer to your question is for the duration of the rental, I don't believe that we're in a position to start dictating. What you need to do in your background to be qualified to be a designated operator, I mean, I, I, that just to me seems totally beyond the scope of what we're doing.
David, the problem that we have is, this was explained to us, we had all these prior meetings on short term rentals. When you had an, a neighbor there running property, there were no problems. Because they knew their neighbors, they knew their neighborhood, they were able to take, and they, they didn't park cars on the, they did the things that made the neighborhood work. Bringing somebody in who doesn't understand that. Takes away from that process, that's, that's my whole point, we're trying to make this thing work for the neighbors.
Steve, does this work if we put in, they must live on site during the occupancy? And they must. Live within. Five hundred feet of the property.
That just confuses it.
Yeah, that's just, hey, look.
At least they have to live on site, I mean, this doesn't say they even have to do that. It, it's, they may. They're authorized to. I authorize you to go to Mars, you can't do it.
I don't have a problem with coming up with something that says, if, if you're a resident and you want to go on vacation. And you want to have somebody take care of your property, I don't like that, but I can live with that, right, because. But, this, this opens the door for any corporation to buy a house. Put a designated operator in there, okay, never, never set foot in that place. And have somebody run that short term rental, and I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, and I, I, I just want to reiterate, I mean, it, I'm just reviewing again exactly what's written by staff. Reflecting city council adopted resolution nineteen fifty-three, you know, arrive at this, um, based on. Suggestions submitted by Michael Lustig, so I mean, they were calling us out to follow, you know, kind of what, what the guidance was coming from there as well. And again, I'm, I'm just seeing that he gave something very specific on this item. So, you know, that, that's, that's where my head is on this, just try to put some language that kind of lines up.
What was specific?
Well, specifically is comments which are submitted in writing, there should be no unhosed S T R S's. The, um. Original intent of the designated operator was for owners of a multifamily who did not live on site to designate a tenant. To act as the owner's proxy on site. And for families who share a house to be able to designate a relative or tenant. To live who lives on site, so the way I'm reading that is that. The designated operator could kind of be, you know, like, like basically, um. A, a tenant that is, is occupying the property that would act as the owner.
How are you going to enforce that?
Well. Steve, you have to, you have to say, not authorized to live on site.
You're, you're right. But John, it does, it does say, if you go back to seventeen fifty-five oh four oh. Talks about types of short term rental permits. It says only a natural person may obtain a short term rental permit, hosted short term rental permit under A, and it says. A primary resident owner may obtain this type of permit, which allows a hosted short term rental and residential property. In compliance with this chapter during the period that the permit is valid. The owner or designated operator must live on site during the period of rental. And must appear at the property within one hour of a phone call requesting such appearance, so that's where. The language of saying that this designated operator has to live on site is inserted.
Is there a problem with making it also part of the definition of a designated operator, changing the word authorized?
I, actually, I have no quarrel with that.
Well, I think.
Actually, I think that David's, David's suggestion was probably the most effective. Designated operator means any natural person who is authorized by the owner. To, uh, one, two, three.
But that's, I agree, but I changed my mind, I mean, I'm, I'm saying required.
Okay, if, if I, if I'm a corporation and I buy a house in Malibu. This is, the language you're using, does that allow me to identify designated operator and use that property as a short, a full time short term rental?
You need to be a primary resident in order to be, get a short term rental permit, so a corporation wouldn't be eligible.
But a corporation could have, uh, some individual applying who has partial ownership, right? So let, let's say the corporation, you know, let's say it's owned by a tenants in common or something, fifty joint owners, one person has point zero five percent, they're an owner, they apply, they'd have the right, correct?
If they're the primary resident, they lived on the property for over a hundred eighty-five days in the year, then they would be eligible, you know, if, you know, someone else could own part of the property. But if they, if they're a primary resident, they're eligible for it, and the designated operator just allows someone else to be the onsite monitor. Um, if they're not there themselves, so if, if you want to require that person to be the, the owner, you can. The, again, I think staff was just trying to. Follow, uh, council's direction that if they're out of town, they could have somebody else be the onsite monitor, you know, during the program, it's up to you guys.
What I'm trying to get away from is. We had a system going where if somebody violated something, you had to call San Francisco. San Francisco had to call the owner, they gave him an hour to reply. And then, you know, you call him at midnight, one o'clock, they get a hold of them, two o'clock, they reply. And this says, oh, he's an hour away, and all of a sudden, nothing ever gets solved, because nobody is there.
You get the problem, let, let's, let's try to come up with, with what it is you want to see in terms of the language on that definitional section.
And John, the designated operator has to answer within one hour and has to be physically on the property between eight P M and six A M, that's in section oh four oh.
Okay, then, then I want to have required to be on site then. If that's.
That's, that's what that section.
That's what it is, they have to be there to answer the door between eight P M and A M.
This says authorized, I'm just talking.
I go to section oh four oh, this is just a definition.
Anywhere else, I'm defining designated operator. I'm trying to clear this up, okay, you can have it in two places, that he's got to be there. But if a guy's a designated operator and it says he's authorized to be there, that doesn't mean he has to be there.
We just said the designated operator means any natural person who complies with the provisions of oh four oh.
So that's what the big argument's about, I mean, it's one word, authorized or required. I mean, I, I, I don't know why it's hard.
It, it, I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, if you want, if, if, if you want to go with authorized or required instead of authorized, you got it.
Okay.
So the changes to the definition to change the word authorized to required for designated operators, is that correct? Is there a consensus?
Well, I would be comfortable with that, I would recommend one other change to that definition if I may. Just that, uh, after, at the final, at the bullet four, live on site at any dwelling unit offered for use as a hosted short term rental. Not for the duration of the rental, but the whoever is a designated operator has to live there. As, you know, if they're a tenant or if they're the owner, they've got to live there in my book, otherwise I think. Well, they're, they live on site, you know, so. You know, we could work on that definition, I mean, you know, if they're a tenant, you know, they rent there, I, I don't know if we have to kind of.
So, so what you're saying is that if you have a home. With, that's, that's got staff, for example, and you've got a live in staff. Then you could go away for a vacation and designate, uh, a live in staff member. Uh, to be the designated person, however, if you don't have staff and you want to bring in a house sitter, that wouldn't be allowed.
I, I look at it from another perspective, and that's that. In, to help the interest of the community, I'm trying to figure out a way that we know that we have someone who's. You know, accountable to answer to bullets one, two and three. But the bullet four is really saying someone who knows a community and is invested in the community, not just another person who. May not have any involvement here, because there's no, there's no saying if this is going to be someone who knows the house at all, it could be just another hire they bring in with every rental. And that's where I think we introduce a problem. So if we have this, sorry, go ahead.
So it has to be, it has to be either staff or another tenant on the property, for example.
That lines up again, to what, to what council has asked, that lines up with the interpretation of what I'm seeing Lustig put in writing. Since he isn't here to speak on his behalf, or we're asked to look to his guidance or his input, that's how I'm interpreting this, this paragraph.
Okay, let's, so, so, um, David.
Can I just say that makes, I understand what your motivation is, and that we're trying to keep this as community oriented as possible. But that absolutely precludes anybody with the best of intentions from going to a neighbor. Saying, will you live in my house during these two weeks that I'm gone so that I have a responsible person here? And by what you want to do, the answer is no, you can't do that.
No, I disagree with you, David, I don't have a problem.
No, he said it has to be a tenant.
Talking about what Chris says.
I'm just saying, the, the, I, I don't have a problem with, with a resident who wants to go on vacation. Who wants to bring somebody in for a couple of weeks to run the house, okay?
Bingo.
We're, you have a problem, but it's a process that says you can buy a house in Malibu. That you don't have to live here, you can turn it into a full time short term rental, and you can identify a designated operator to come in and do that. And that designated operator doesn't have to have any, any interest in the community or the neighborhood he's in.
I think we got, I think we heard your position, Steve, the question is, we're talking about Chris's position right now. And Chris's position is that the designated operator has to be somebody who lives. On the property on a regular basis, that's what we're talking about right now.
So, let, let's.
Point is that it, that it makes it essentially. Impossible, and, and. Let's, let's see if, you know, if you want to put it to, let's take a little straw vote and see whether your position.
It's just one thing, if, if you do it the way, that any corp, any house, anybody. Buy a house and put a short term, a designated operator in there, we're turning Malibu into a motel. That's what we're doing, everybody.
License, you can't get a license unless.
And, and, and so your point is, I, I think that your point, Steve, is that. The whole designated operator scheme. I, I'm not sure what your point is, because if, 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 well, let me ask you this, if you, you're okay with somebody having their neighbor come in and house sit. But, but you're not okay if they bring in somebody who lives there permanently to house sit.
It's nothing says they live there permanently.
But that, that's what I'm trying, by striking those last five words from this line, that's. That's what I'm trying to set up, Steve.
Yeah, but I think you, you, you gotta look at, you can't rent your house at all. Unless it's your home and you live there a hundred and eighty-five days.
Exactly.
Right.
You can't get a license, so you, you, you can't be an outside person who's not a resident who has a short term rental.
So that takes care of Steve's objection, because that, that person could never get the permit at all. Right, the idea of your concern is, corporate, person A comes in, buys a house, puts somebody in it. Can't do that, because you got to permanently live, live in the house, you got to be a permanent resident of the house before you get your permit, okay?
And then we have another.
You go, you're with me, Steve?
I'm with you.
Alright, now, let's talk about the.
We have another provision later that enforces that, saying only one person can be a designated operator. You can't be a designated operator for two properties.
Okay, so.
Comes later, right?
So, Chris, is there, uh, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we move on from this, you want to strike? You want to strike, uh, uh.
For the duration of the rental.
Duration of the rental. So it would read, live on site at any dwelling unit offered for use as a host, uh, ho- uh, hosted short term rental, alright, so. Let's go through, is, are there three votes to support that, John?
I'm just, I, I'm not clear, so you're saying they have to live there permanently, essentially?
Yeah, effectively, they, they've got to be a neighbor, so part of the neighborhood, so.
Well, not, not a neighbor, they have to live there.
That's what I'm saying, by living there, they're a neighbor.
Okay, so John said no, David says?
No.
I say no.
Makes no difference.
Yeah, okay, so.
So the only change is, uh, changing authorized to required in this definition.
That's, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
But, yeah, the night is young. Uh, okay, so dwelling unit, this is a biggie.
Where's dwelling unit?
It's the next one. Operator. I have, I have trouble. Because it seems like. Maybe you can help me out what your thinking was, it seems like you go from dwelling unit to property and kind of back and forth, I mean. At, at one point, it was kind of like. The, the person had to live in the dwelling unit, but, but that's not what you mean, right? Okay, and, and I'm not sure that I could put my. Questions about this one to thoughts, my, my notes are a little bit of a mess right now. Uh, but let's, let's see if there's anybody else who wants to. To go on with either dwelling unit or the rest of the definitions on that first page.
The, the one, the one thing that came to mind for me is just in terms of, um, accessory dwelling unit, I know we've kind of touched on this before. Um, that'll, that'll be covered as that A D U's come back in front of us. But, um, do we have any risk for kind of the second line here that this could go against the state laws related to, um. No using A D U's for short term rentals?
Well, this, it's, it's, the state law is permissive. You can do it if you, if, if, you, it is, it is permitted to deny the use of A D U's for short term rentals, if you want to do that.
There, there are a, a few small categories where it's prohibited, um, but in otherwise, it's going to be the choice of the city. Um, but we'll, we'll deal with that when we cross over, this dwelling unit definition is actually the existing definition, there's a small cleanup that, uh, I think. Was, was added, where they added motel or bed and breakfast in, just to clarify that and the exception, so this is already an existing definition.
I guess it was, it was the other dwelling unit definition that I had in, in, uh, the, um. Uh, the local coastal program, uh, amendment that was giving me. Trouble, but, um. Alright, let's, I'll pass it, I'll, I'll, hopefully I'll think of it later, or maybe.
I have a problem with the number two there, and that is. That says, any room used sleeping which contains a bar sink. Gas, electrical or water outlets designed. Used or intended to be used as cooking facility, well. That means that covers bootlegs as far as I'm concerned.
No, it doesn't, because there's another provision that says they've got to be licensed, you got to have permits, they got to have everything up to, you know, up to stuff. So it doesn't include, but. Bootlegs.
Run out of bootleg under this, that's strictly prohibited.
We don't have houses with two, two kitchens usually.
This, this was a, this was a definition from a long time ago, it was stuck in the, into the, the interim zoning ordinance, I don't remember exactly why. Alright, so let's, let's see if we can move on to, um. The next page, uh, where you've got your definition of lives on site and owner and primary residence and short term rental. I have one, one comment I'd like to make, I've made it before, it doesn't get any traction with you guys, I'm speaking mainly to the attorneys. Short term rental property means the renting or offer to make available by way of rental agreement, blah, 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 for compensation, blah, 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 blah. Uh, for a period of thirty consecutive days or less. And then it goes on to a transient, transient is defined no place in the M N C, I don't know what it is, but.
It, it's, it's defined in section three point two four, so the idea is that the definition matches the T O T ordinance, um, which has definition.
Alright, let's say that it does. And that's how it takes it out of, of including month to month tenancies?
Yeah.
Okay, what, what is that section again?
Uh, I think it's three point two four, is that right, Bonnie?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's the T O T, uh, it's the T O T, uh, section of the revenue and finance, um. Title in the municipal code.
Ah, okay.
I'd, I'd like to go, if you could, go back to a guest house. Because the, the last line of the guest house.
Back on the previous page?
Yeah, I'd like to get rid of, because it says. Unless permitted pursuant to a valid short term rental permit by the state. Well, guest houses in our L I P. And in our city code are not allowed to be rented. So this is allowing you to give a permit on something that's not allowed to be rented. And.
The, Commissioner Maza, the only place that, um. Unless, unless you know of another place, but I checked, the only place that it talked about, um. That guest houses are not allowed to be rented is in the definition of guest house, so.
So there you go.
That's the only.
Finding a guest house is something that you can't rent. But if you give them a rental permit, yeah.
This, well, this is provide, this is creating a new carve out. To allow a guest house to be rented as long as somebody gets a short term rental permit in order to do it, and if you are recommending. You want to recommend that that not be carved out, that could be part of your recommendation to the city council.
You, I'd like to get rid of it because it's a huge loophole, say we have. Two thousand guest houses in Malibu. We allow a, a, another dwelling unit. Because a guest house can't be rented. And now we're getting two extra dwelling units, because. When you give a rental permit, you can say, oh, go ahead and rent your guest house, so all of a sudden, we're adding one to two thousand rental units to Malibu. When our L I P says you can't do it. And so if we.
Well, the, the same change would be in the L I P, so again, if you would like to just add to your recommendations to the. Well, the, the same change would be in the L I P. So again, if you would like to just add to your recommendations to the council that they eliminate that cha- this change that's proposed, then we can do that.
I just want to eliminate the last sentence, unless permitted pursuant to a valid short-term rental.
Right. That's what I mean.
Yeah. And, and I, I hope we have consensus on that because that, that probably doubles the number of rental units.
I'm sorry, Bonnie, would you just, what was the purpose of putting it in?
Um, it was it's just adding, um, the ability for somebody to rent their guest house out. Um, some people have guest houses that don't have a kitchen in them. And, um, we think that people are probably already renting out these types of units, whether they're allowed to or not. So we were trying to, um, put in a carve-out that would allow them to be rented out if, if the person gets the, the proper short-term rental permit and then it falls under this whole scheme.
It seemed strange to me. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, that, that's fine. But that was the only reason that, that we, we think it's probably already being done. But if you, if you think it, we shouldn't do that, that's fine. We can add that recommendation.
What you're saying is that if you have a guest house, you can't rent it by the month of the year, but you can use it for a short term. And it makes no sense.
Well, by the, by the same token, if a person owns, uh, a, a property with, that has a guest house, um, uh, they can't use it for short-term rental if they live in the house and try to rent out the guest house. But if they want to move into the guest house and rent out their home, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't have to cook. They can live in it, but they, they can't rent it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Guests are made for, for guests.
All right. So your suggestion is that we take out the last, uh, the la- that, that, that added sentence, unless permitted pursuant to a valid short-term rental agreement. Let's, 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 let's go down. Chris, you agree with that?
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
David?
I'm, either way, sure.
Uh, where's John? There, there's Steve, brother.
Yeah, I'm where I'm in.
Okay, you got three.
Okay, we, we can just remove the whole thing because there's no amendment to the guest house provision then. So we'll just delete the whole, uh, uh, definition there.
All the added language. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, okay, so let's go. What's, what, who's next? What's, what's up?
Mr. Jennings, I was, I was gonna make, uh, one, uh, offer one option, um, related to the word transient. If you wanted to tack on to the end of, um, that the definition of short-term rental, you could say, um, days or less to a transient as defined in chapter three point two four, if that would make it more clear where the definition of transient comes from.
That might be a good idea. I don't know. I, I don't know what that definition is. I was just concerned. You know, uh, uh, later on in the ordinance, you have a, you have a section that says that, you know, we don't, we're not talking about month-to-month rentals here. And it seems to me, I always thought that, that a period of thirty consecutive days or less, that's, that's a month-to-month rental. And, and you could even, you could solve it by putting in twenty-nine days if you wanted to, or you're saying less than thirty days. But, but, um, it's just an ambiguity. It was a chance of, of to, to get rid of it, but I really think it's going to be an issue. So I'm willing to pass on it.
Okay.
And I go back one to primary residence. Uh, okay. The requirement for primary residence is you, you got a gas bill or a driver's license or identification. But what really makes a home a primary residence is under law, you're only allowed to have one exemption on your property tax. You could own a hundred houses. Your only one can have a, uh, what's called a uh, homeowner's exemption. So I would like to require a property tax bill with a homeowner's exemption. Then we know there aren't four or five of these houses and the guy has a bunch of, uh, you know, you can, you can go into the DMV and get a new driver's license. You can have five of them with different addresses on them. Um, you can do all kinds of things. But in this case, the, the county, the county is, this is the only house you have an exemption on.
The, the, um, not everybody takes the homeowner's exemptions for various reasons, but I think the thing that I'm, I'm persuaded about at this is that for all the fire burnouts, the staff has worked out what appears to be a satisfactory way of determining who was the residents in the house before the home burned. And it seems to work well. It doesn't seem to present problems. Um, and so.
Do we have that as a written policy anywhere? No, I suggest we get it as a written.
Yes, it, it, well, it's, uh, it's, uh, memorialized in the, uh, resolution adopted by the city council for the fee waiver program.
But didn't, this, it said, it said, left it up to the director to determine.
No, it lists the type of.
In, in the most recent one, it, it, it had the, the criteria in it.
Okay. Do we need to spell that out?
It's the same.
It's the same as listed here.
Okay. Okay.
Which is voter registration, driver's license, or other government, um, ID card.
My fishing license works. Okay.
I don't know. That's a government ID card.
They, they issue it.
It is, yeah. Uh, okay. Any, any, anything else on that page?
Seventeen five five oh one oh.
That's what, yes, I have one on the first part.
I just, what?
But what about it? What about it, Steve? What is it?
It, the, the issue that says, uh, for multifamily, if you've got up to, you can have two dwelling units in a multifamily parcel. And if you have his lease, so I could have a, a three-unit condo and rent out two of those and only have one. That's a miserable way to live. So I'd like to suggest that if you, you, up to, if you have a, a unit with five units in it, you get one, one, uh, short-term rental and above five, you get two.
I want to make another suggestion for discussion. And, and this, I base on the fact that we, we, hopefully we can get in a position where we're not changing use of properties. Okay. When you go over fifty percent, coastal can say, oh no, that's totally different. So I would like to say no more than forty percent of the units with a maximum of two. That means you would need five units to get two. Instead of four, when you get four, it's fifty percent of the, it's like West Malibu Road. We had a presentation by Lustig about two years ago where like seventy-five percent of West Malibu Road was taken over. Uh, if we can keep every particular unit to less than fifty percent, at least we're not changing the use of the primary building.
I, I just, I ask one favor, just, just briefly, if, if we can look like three pages ahead, there's a section which defines multi-units. I think we're better to touch that on seventeen five, on page six. Um, because here it's up to two units. It doesn't specify how that mix is. I think this language would work okay. And then we just clarify those ratios in that section.
I think you're right.
So, so if you flash forward, John, on the header of the pages, you'll see, uh, a page six in the upper right corner there on, it's section seventeen five five oh four oh. It listed types. Section B has a definition for multifamily. I think we could put those thoughts that both you and Steve are having there and it fits better. And then the language above, the max is two units anyway. It just works.
Yeah, I think you're right. I agree with that.
Well, let's use that now so we don't forget it.
Well.
That's supposed to change.
It's a very important change.
No, it isn't. It is.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah. Nope. Okay, let's go to it now. Let, let's go to the definition on, on, uh, seventeen fifteen oh four oh B. Multifamily short-term rental permit.
I like John's idea of kind of stating it as a percentage. It's just kind of a, you know, it, 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 it kind of translates pretty easily.
I can live with John's.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so.
So after forty per, uh, forty percent of the unit could be used for short-term rentals up to a maximum of two.
Right.
Hey, now.
Do you want the rest of it in there? The requirement for long-term tenants in the other spaces?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, he's just talking about the number of units.
Now, that brings up a question I have, and I don't know where that.
So, so we, we have, who did I hear say yes about that?
You got a yes here.
Got a yes here.
Got it. Okay, good. All right.
Let, let me ask you, just, the condos are mentioned in here. Okay. And I've been told that the condo up above the wetlands is, is close to seventy percent short-term rental.
Well, one question, John. Should we go back up to the section we're on? Because we're going to come back through, um, otherwise we're gonna, if we drill in on that definition, we're going to come to it anyway. Probably better to keep going through uh, from where we were above, I think.
You just remember, go back to topic.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll hit that again.
So we're back at, we're, we're back at B on page two.
Can I make sure I have this language right in, uh, oh four oh B? The, the change is in, this is the first sentence. And it says, may obtain this type of permit which allows the short-term rental of up to forty percent of the units in the building, up to a maximum of two units, so long as the other units are rented for a period and no more changes. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we're back on three.
Back on the page two, B.
Okay, my next item is item six on that, on the next page. Item, page three.
All right. What's your item?
It just ensures basic health and safety features. You know, the last time I read, most of the hotels have got rules in terms with this virus stuff, how you have to clean the place after someone's there. I don't know if we want to put that in here, if that's something that we think is important. I don't think this virus is going away at any time in the near future. Uh.
And, and this is the long-term ordinance. I, I would, you know.
I, I don't think we have the confidence to be able to say how that, that needs to be.
I mean, yeah, there, there's, you know, if we need that, it's available in some of the other places, but.
But you know, the, the, this whole thing is subject to regulation or, or regula- regulations promulgated by uh, either the city manager or Bonnie. I can't remember which one. So if that needs to be done, it can be done easily through a regulation.
And we're not going to inspect it, which means.
Yeah.
You're going to rely on Yelp and Airbnb to have people say.
All right, all right.
Okay. So anything else on that? Page three.
I did, I did have a quick question. Just, um, um, I'm kind of playing through in my head, uh, some of the public comment. I'm back to page two for a second, just to talk about owner. Um, there was an example where twenty-five people own a property together. Um, as far as that definition of owner, so any one of those people could be the applicant, um, submit the paperwork, and then they would have to play the role of owner going forward, or they're designated operator as we've defined. We just, so, so effectively that kind of.
Things. They, they need to, they need ownership and they need to be a primary resident.
Right.
Right.
Got it. So the, okay.
ID also.
So they gotta live there at least, what, a hundred and sixty-five days a year and have some fractional ownership at least. We don't care what the fraction is, but they also have to live there. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, as primary. Okay, thank you.
Three.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. So we did not want to do the taxing, John. We did not, uh, uh, agree on that, right? Because that person probably couldn't do the tax. It was, Bonnie had her own processes to identify.
What tax?
Sorry. Bonnie, you, for primary residence, that was based on what's the language here, right? There were no changes to that?
There was no change.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so we've, we've, we've gone through number six on page three. Anything else on page three that anybody wants to suggest?
Um, hang on a second.
Okay, let's go to page four. That is about the application, you know, and the review and all the rest of that stuff.
Oh, let me just ask you a question on page six. On page three, I mean, uh, the last one, B. It says, um, short-term rental permit is required for e- every legal lot. So are you going to determine, you know, some of these houses have three or four legal lots on them? Um, we had to figure out where the house is, or how does that work?
Which, which number is that, John, that you're looking at?
Seventeen fifty-five oh two oh B. Uh, I'm sure nobody ever thought about. Trevor, where'd you go? You run away from this one? Uh, it could be a, a, a property that has, uh, uh, two or three legal lots on it, maybe one house. Uh, I'm.
You know, the person can only get one permit and then they would have to pick which lot the house is on. So if, if they have three lots, but the house is on one of them, you know, that would be the lot that they would be picking for the, uh, the short-term rental permit.
Be able to get a permit on a, on a lot, on a parcel, a legal parcel that didn't have a home on it anyway.
Yeah, you wouldn't need one. The only problem you could have is if someone had two lots and like second unit was on the other one, and they could do a lot merger if they want to, to get around it. But I don't think that really is a common situation.
That's not even. Since. Yeah.
Now, we're in here, do we allow, uh, RVs and mobile homes? Um, and, and, uh, Airstreams?
We do allow mobile homes.
Airstreams and tra- trailers.
Yeah, those are specifically, they're specifically prohibited from short-term rental. That comes up later in the ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry, before we go off page three, I have a couple more quick ones, a little higher. Commissioner, Chair Jennings, if I, if I may. Um, I just, I just want to talk a little bit, um, the, the, uh, at the top, uh, bullet five, um, it wraps the page and it says, no person may serve as a designated operator for one or for more than one hosted short-term rental. I, I, I could interpret that a couple of ways. Like, is that consecutively more than one? Is it that we have to have like a whole, like if there are ten properties, you're going to be, like, could somebody have kind of a job as a designated, designated operator and go from property to property sequentially? Is that saying we can't host at the same time? I'm not quite sure what we're trying to cover there.
The main point of this is to ensure that one designated operator is not responsible for, you know, multiple properties that are being rented all at the same time.
Simultaneous.
In that instance, the designated operator would not be able to live on all, on more than one property at a time.
Okay, so I think we should probably clean this language up somehow, just because this could, I, I was reading it more like, um, you can only be an operator on one property, when in reality, if I'm an operator on Wednesday at property A, I could be an operator on Tuesday on property C. Right? That's what you, that would be allowed here.
You, no, you have to register as your designated operator. So someone had to come in and amend, you know, their license to designate someone else as an operator, because then you would have two people designated as operators at the same time on different sites.
No, I mean, so if, if you and Bonnie each own a house and I, I act as an operator, I would call you, Trevor, hey, can I, can I be your operator? Sure. And then I call Bonnie, hey, and you'd both put me on record, but I couldn't.
Problem, if you're both on record, that's the problem, because you'd be designated on two different permits as the designated operator, which is not allowed.
But that's a different use case than what Bonnie described. She said specifically at the same temporally. You're saying they can't even be the same on any app. So we're going to have a lot of designated operators in the city, as many as there are, uh, facilities arguably.
Nobody's saying, I guess, you can be a designated operator on house A.
Mm-hmm.
A week later, you can go in and change your license as a designated operator to be on house B. But you can't be at the same time a designated operator on more than one house.
You can add language during the same period of time or something like that.
I'd be comfortable if we did that, yeah. So no person may serve as a designated operator for more than one short-term rental concurrently.
All right.
Fine. That, does that, okay, sorry. And then, um, the other one, uh, bullet nine. So.
Let, let's be, let's make sure we got everybody on board. Everybody happy with. Yeah. Yeah, that seems to be approved. Nine is what?
Um, one sec. Um, so, um, when, when you, five hundred thousand dollars, uh, policy, is, is that some kind of liability standard? I mean, how, like, how, how do we ensure that, say, say someone is renting in a private community and that short-term renter is, say, injured while, you know, walking across an easement on a neighboring property? What, you know, does the liability policy kick in where that neighbor will be covered? And if so, is five thousand, hundred thousand really enough in, in our area? You know, that's just what comes to mind for me.
It doesn't, it doesn't work that way. If you go under off on somebody else's property, get injured, they have to have the insurance.
Yeah.
Right? You're only insured for your property.
Just as if the property owner walked across the street and fell on somebody else's property, which you said, same thing.
Okay, so all we're saying is that the, we're saying as a city, you got to put at least five hundred thousand, do what you want above that to ensure yourself. And we, we as a city are okay kind of with, um, recognizing that we will have a number of transient residents coming in through short-term rental, which will be in the community. And so basically those neighbors have to be aware that, whoa, if somebody gets hurt on my property, I better have proper insurance. So anyone who's a neighbor to an operator might need to revisit the policies.
I, yeah, I'm not sure that, that, that there's any statistics showing that short-term rental people are more accident prone than anybody else. I mean.
No, I'm just saying there won't be as familiar with the neighborhood. So, you know, just, just to be aware as a neighbor.
By the way, there is specific homeowner's insurance you need to have if you're going to have a short-term rental.
Yeah.
They're not covered, so you gotta get that policy anyway.
Okay, okay, sorry, that, that was all I had on this page.
Okay, so that moves us over to page four. Maybe page five.
Well, um, four, I have a question, I'm trying to find it on this whole list of stuff you must have. But. If you. Have a multifamily building. And you've got, you can, you're big enough to have two units. You, I would think you need to designate which units. So. They don't know that there's three rented out or four rented out, you have to say, unit C and unit D are my short-term rental units.
You'd have to do that in, in their permit application, wouldn't you, Bonnie?
Well, that's what this is, it's the application contents, and I can't find it. Maybe it's there somewhere.
The address of the proposed short-term rental and the type of dwelling.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's the address of the whole building. Do you have to say unit B and unit D?
I think you, you need to provide evidence that all the other units are rented on a long-term basis, so it'll have to be designated, because. Right?
Do we want to say you must designate which units are short-term?
Remember how.
You should.
Yeah, I think you'd have to, I mean, because the others have to be rented, so.
I would like to add that somewhere, uh, just, you have to designate.
The, the, the.
Unit number.
How about just a number two, the type and designation of the dwelling.
Right, I, that's the place to put it, yeah.
Maybe type on location?
No, which F just says good.
That, I don't even mean by designation.
Well, I would say designation of unit number.
You know, like apartment B.
Right.
And which, sorry.
Grab that, Trevor.
And, and unit designation, type of dwelling unit and unit designation, how's that?
And John, which line is that?
I, it's not there, we're gonna add it.
Oh, got it.
We're adding it to the end of type of dwelling unit under D two on page four.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, is there consensus on that?
Yeah. Who said no?
Who said no? Nobody said no.
Okay, keep going.
Uh, question on number eight. Any and all advertisements, um, I, I don't know how, how, uh, kind of the, the sites are configured, uh, you know, currently, but. Um, is that a realistic ask? I mean, I don't know if there are sites that kind of just, um, kind of duplicate, um. Listings, so is that even traceable? I, I, I'm just not familiar enough with kind of how, um. The advertising sites are working nowadays, but, um.
Well, they're referrals, you want the primary URL. And.
Any and all.
And this would cover. See, there's real estate agents in town who are, aren't Airbnb, but they're advertising, I'll get you a rental. I've seen them.
And if they.
Also.
And if they put them on the MLS, it's gonna go to like Silo and Trulia and all these other sites that the applicant may not be aware that their Realtor is doing on their behalf. So I mean, I guess the language any and all just gives me a little pause, because I don't know if. Your, your applicant is necessarily gonna know all that, would that put people in violation?
There's something else you would rather have in there?
I, I don't know, I'm just, um.
Well, see, they're copying the other site. If you have your information on the other site, there, the, the ones truly in need to pick up the other sites.
Right.
And all, yeah.
I don't think it's a serious problem if you've got the main, if you've got the main site designated, I mean, who's gonna come in and say, oh, you didn't, you know?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're not concerned that that could be some, something where people keep getting tripped up, like, well, how do I find every site?
Question is, if it turns out to be a problem, then.
Yeah.
We'd be dealt with by regulation.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with that.
All right, can we move down to page five? How many pages? Oh, my God.
Another quick question, um, just on bullet ten, that attestation to the number of bedrooms, we do, I mean. So to kind of go towards where John had touched on before, uh, that seventy score feet of people are kind of carving out rooms. Obviously, everything, we still have another clause which says everything's got to be a code, et cetera, so, um.
If you go in on a, you know, your condo and you say, yeah, I've got six bedrooms, um. I don't think that's gonna.
You're gonna get pushed back.
You're getting, uh, uh, you know, two times six plus two, or whatever it is.
Exactly, okay.
They say as determined by staff.
But if.
Well, it's an attestation.
Yeah, if, if you lie on it, then, you know, you're subject to revocation and prohibition for twelve months.
But you're not lying if it's a seventy square foot space.
Well, but then it's not.
The idea was that having staff do the research on each of these properties permitting would take a lot of staff time. So, in this case, it's honest on you to be honest, and if you're not, then you suffer and you lose your permit for a year.
Okay, on number five, number D. Or G, I'm sorry, top of the page?
Yes.
Uh, it's short-term rental permits, and this is a question for staff. Are these gonna be annual permits? Uh, or, or twelve months from when you apply, because it's gonna be real hard to take care of it. If it's, if it's a running permit, I would assume we should put an annual in there.
Well, it says it would be issued for one year, so I take it that that one year would start from the issuance date, right? Yeah, but it would run for a year from the issuance date and you would have to apply for a renewal before that runs out.
That's correct, that's why you have to apply, I think, over thirty days before it expires, if you want to avoid, I mean, a gap.
Well, I, I just find it simpler in most cases. Where you got a two thousand twenty license. And you get a two thousand twenty-one license. Staff.
You're saying calendar year versus, uh, when they come in?
Yeah, I mean, it just makes it staff a lot simpler for staff.
I, I think staff actually delighted the other way, because they get them all at one time, it can overwhelm staff. So if it's spread out, that was, that was what, uh, we were hearing from staff.
Well, I just, you know, as far as.
Either's fine.
As far as compliance goes, though, when the compliance officer sits down. And looks at the number on the screen. For that particular unit. Where they do in Laguna, there's, there's a, the first number is what year it was issued. For, and so when they see a two instead of a three, they know it's expired, it's no good. It's just very simple. Well, it's just a matter of what staff wants, but. Uh, it, it really makes it simple, it's like, it's like on your. Car sort of, but not really, yeah. I'm just trying to make it.
I, I think staff's indicated, I have no problem with it the way it is, is there?
Yes, well, we, we may design the permit numbers to be something like. You know, have the, the month and the year numbers as the first three numbers or something, but that's a good suggestion.
Okay, now on the, the last one, I want to add M. M to that paragraph. And, and somebody brought this up in, in the hearing.
Is this section O two O?
Yes, he's in O two O.
Okay.
Yeah, uh. The, the neighbors need to know that there is a permit. And they need to know whether the violations have been recorded. So I think that we should put something in like. All, all filed short-term information. And violations shall be. Public information and subject to inspection or posted on the city website. Now, neighbors can look it up.
There's a provision for specific notice for everybody within five hundred feet, isn't there, if the, on the issuance of a permit?
Just says they give them a permit. It doesn't say.
It's, you know, I, I, I got it, and, and the idea about, about violations. Uh, being public notice, is that something that, that there's any kind of a legal difficulty with? Trevor?
I think the, the concern about having something on the website is that it could invite. A criminal element, if somebody is, you know, looking at for where the, these are located and when. They're gonna be occupied and not, these would be records that'd be subject to disclosure for a public records request, that's, that's the system that. Uh, was proposed here by staff.
Well, Chris. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to kind of play this through, I mean, right now, if there's code enforcement open on a property, we do have the ability to pull by address all those violations, correct?
It'd be the same thing. It'd be treated the same as a regular code violation.
Yeah, so, okay, so then we would have visibility to violations, is what you're saying.
Be able to, if you want that information, you would. You'd be able to find it out.
The names of the bad guys wouldn't be published on the front page.
Just not on the website, you'd have to just file a request with the city too.
So every time there's a problem. It's like the problem we had up in La Costa. You know, there were multiple, multiple violations, and, and the people kept saying, we could never get a police report or any kind of. Follow-up on what happened. And that's what I'm after is. If there's a big problem, how do the people know that somebody did anything?
Right.
They, if there's a problem, they should be notifying the, if it's after hours, the sheriff, and they can notify. City code enforcement, and city code enforcement will follow up, that's how we track the problem properties. And code enforcement's been working extremely closely with all the neighbors and the, the actual property owner of the. Property to, um, address this.
But if I walked into City Hall, could I say? How many violations are on this house?
Yeah.
The, the city's gonna have to have a tracking system, because they have to keep track of it for the revocation purposes.
One of these things, I have found unique and you'll never find out.
That's a public, uh, public record, right?
Yeah. The thing is for this new system where we're gonna have to be tracking these violations, there's gonna have to be something put in place where the staff's gonna have to track it, so it should be easily. Obtainable.
I've, I've got one question here, if, if I could go back to K. Nothing in this chapter shall limit the ability of, for property owners, CCNRs or homeowners association. Uh, from prohibiting or further limiting short-term rental property. Such limitations shall be allowed. Why wouldn't you just stop? At the semicolon, why would you add such limitations shall be allowed? And the reason I'm thinking about that is that. Uh, homeowners associations occasionally go off the rails and, 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 uh. Do things that are either procedurally or substantively. Uh, subject to challenge, and, and, and we've said, okay, we're gonna allow this. And then the lawsuit comes, and then we're, we're in the lawsuit, why would we? Why would we do that?
If, if you want to delete the last, after the semicolon, that's totally fine, the purpose of this, this was a specific direction from the council, um, most likely in, in, uh. In reaction to the Mandalay Bay case, where as a CCNR prohibited short-term rentals. And one of the, the owners of the short-term rental unit sued this, the, uh, this. The homeowners association said, I, I've been doing this forever, I should be able to keep doing it, and there was a decision saying that. Um, uh, HOA can't do that, it's up to the city, or the coastal commission to, to, uh, promulgate that, so this is us saying. That we're, that we're gonna allow HOAs to do that, that's authorized. That's the purpose of it.
That's, I think, a good thing.
Yeah, and, and just two quick questions, one, um, would an overlay district be relevant in that section K? Would, could an, could an overlay could not make a abuse ruling?
Well, you, you, that's something that's in the code, they can't violate the code.
But we couldn't overlay.
You could create a new overlay that prohibits short-term rentals, but, you know, that, that's a, that's a legislative process through the city, so.
Right.
They'll just get together themselves and, you know. Do, they'd have to come to the city and say, hey, we want to amend the overlay zone to prevent this, but that's already allowed, this provision really wouldn't have any implication on that.
Okay, so the overlay itself would be kind of stand on its own?
Yeah.
Pretty few, may, people may have to do that, because. At least in my end of town. Mostly CNNR's have expired. All of them have expired, um, Malibu West still hasn't, but there's very few areas that do.
Right, okay, so, um, anything then on the grounds for denial or revocation?
I just got one, one question before. You know, some place in here, we talked about, we're gonna maintain a registry of these properties. Is, is that anywhere in this? Document, I couldn't find it.
Well, and how visible is that? And that plays into the code enforcement, which I still have questions on, yeah, I'm, I'm the same.
If, if that shows up someplace else, I can wait, but I just, I couldn't find it when I looked through it.
I, I, I don't remember, I, I. I know what you're talking about, I don't remember either, Bonnie, you got any help for us?
I am looking, um, I thought it was under hosting.
I don't believe there's a registry requirement in it.
Trevor, I talked to you about this earlier today.
This in order to, you know, they're gonna have to create a system to, to track these, but there's not, there's not like a. But not, there's not a website where you can go to, to pull them up, because we don't want people to do unless they're gonna make a PRA request, so we know. Doing it, so there's not.
You gotta, you gotta be listed on the registry to get listed on the.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me address, let me address this. Um, on page eight, under fifty, seventeen fifty-five O nine O. Uh, C, it. The, it says hosting platform shall not complete any booking transaction for any. Uh, property or unit unless listed on the city's registry of properties with. Valid short-term rental permits at the time the hosting platform received the fee for the booking transaction. So basically, um, the hosting platforms are being required to make sure that. The property has a valid short-term rental permit before they process the, um, transaction, so that. If you were looking for the word registry, that's where it is.
So my question was. There's gonna be someplace where the hosting platform looks on the city, on the city. Website someplace to see what that registry is? Does that registry exist? Where is it?
Well, the city is gonna have a list of all the active valid short-term rental permits. Because we're the ones issuing the permits.
We got it, okay, so how does the host, how does the host? The renting platform under, get a list of that, so they know what they're doing? How do they get access to that?
Um. I'm not sure if we've worked out those details yet, it may be that they have to, um, check with the city before they process the transaction, um. I don't think we've got all the mechanics of that worked out.
I think there's, there's multiple ways to do it, and, and, you know, one way is to circulate lists to them that, that are on an approved list. Or to require them to contact the city to complete it, or that's gonna be, it's most likely gonna be an updated list that's sent to them. Since.
And I would just suggest, you know, we're, this is twenty twenty, all right? And having us ship paper back and forth, I mean, if you can automate this somehow, I would recommend you do that, because I, I don't have to print stuff out, and I don't have to shift. Just make your life easy.
Well, I also want to, you know, to these. These big platforms are. Are sophisticated, they can do things electronically, but we're gonna have a lot of tiny platforms. You know, Coldwell Bank or Broker Number Seven. Okay, and they have to know that they're okay, and so it's gotta be able to be accessed by some version of the public. Uh, or they can't comply.
Well, all right, the requirement is there, and Bonnie will have to work out the details of how people are gonna actually get to it.
Uh, uh, there were, there's a follow-up I had, I don't know if it belongs in this section, but just kind of playing through, uh. The, the, with the, with, like, okay, somebody checks in a hotel, there's a record that that hotel maintains for who. Was at the property at what time, you know, so if anyone ever has to kind of research that or know who's accountable onsite as the STR tenant. Um, there's a record, do we have anything in this, which also, if there's something which needs to research, who was? The tenant onsite, you know, three weeks ago, whatever, that, that, does the host, the platform hosts do that, or the, the hosts themselves at a platform? Just in case that information's needed, or, or is there any, any obligation or any desire to have something like that captured?
I looked at Airbnb today with their, the information, they say you've got to give to get a rental property. And there really isn't much there that allows you to go back after the fact and identify something.
Just, right, right.
Yeah, just isn't there.
Well, I have, they, they have, it depends on if, whether you're just looking for your own curiosity, or whether. Or whether you're serious about going after it, all of that stuff has been subject to litigation before, but what, whether they have to disclose the identity of the people who are. Who are residents and so forth, they have to have those records, because they have to keep track of who's getting paid for what.
There, there are obligations under our TOT ordinance that require you to, to maintain these records for a three-year period. Um, so you can be audited, you know, for TOT purposes.
The operator.
What's in the records you're, you're maintaining, though? What, that's, that's the question we're dealing with, what's in?
Uh, it's, it's in chapter three point two four, you know, the date, price, I, I'd have to pull it up to bring exactly what it is, but it's, it's, it's what you need in order to determine what the TOT is that's owed.
But how can I track, but whoever's, I think the question was. I ran it to you, okay, and while you're in my property, you go out and you have a car wreck, or you, you hit. You hit and run, whatever the hell happens, and someone comes back later on to sort of say, okay, he was living there, who is he? Does, does the property owner have enough information to be able to identify that you were the scoundrel that did that?
Right, right.
Uh, I, I had. A property in Hawaii that did that, and. I went to Airbnb to get the records. And they will only give you. It was rented this ti- this period of time and how much money, they will not give you who. This was as of a year ago. Now, they give a city who, but they won't give the owner of the house who.
So Trevor, as far as what you were citing in section three dot two four, whatever it was, if, if there is a case where. An, an owner or a neighbor, whoever, has to backtrack and figure out who was there at a time something happened. Is there a way to get to that or would that just be a black hole like John's describing?
Well, you're required to maintain the records and then you have to produce them if there's an audit to um, determine what it is. I, I, I don't think the, the purpose of that is so that you can verify that, you know, the proper tax is paid. It's not meant to, you know, provide a record of everyone where they've been ever in their lives.
Right, but now if we looked at a hotel, are they required to keep the record of who was there at all times? Uh, like through like the credit card transaction, signed documentation, something like that?
I would have the same exact requirement for the TOT purposes. They're going to maintain the same thing, uh, unless they have state regs that require a, some additional documentation. But in terms of this, what the city requires, it'd be the same thing for a hotel as it would be for a short-term rental.
What is that? We know what that is?
Um, pulling it up, it's. Three point two four. Uh, point one one zero records. It shall be the duty of every operator liable for the collection and payment to the city of any tax imposed by this chapter to keep and preserve. For a period of three years, all records as may be necessary to determine the amount of such taxes. It may have been liable for the collection and payment to this, of, to the city, which records the tax administrator shall have the right to inspect at all reasonable times.
So I mean, I, I just, I just want to call it, we, we don't know who's here.
Yeah, that's not going to let me get to the person.
Right, right, and we won't know who's here. Um, so just, just FYI, we don't have anything in here, which would give us uh, visibility to kind of that. You know, broader picture of where the violations might be happening, and then if there is a problem with a given short-term tenant. There's no obligation to keep any record of who that was. They'd have to work with the host who may or may not. Well, you know, give that information.
If they're booking through the hosting platform, there are the requirements of seventeen five five oh nine oh. Which uh, requires, subject to applicable laws, hosting platform shall disclose to the city on a regular basis. Each short-term rental listing located in the city, the names of the owner. As, look at the length of stay for each listing and the price paid. So it doesn't, I guess, doesn't say the name also.
They don't give it to you.
Yeah.
You can't even get it if you're the owner.
Um, okay, if you were the owner, wouldn't you want to know who this person is? Wouldn't you want to have?
You, you should, but a lot of people have companies running it for them. And they don't even think about it. And then the guy murders the neighbor or something and then. You know, they figure it out. A lot of these short-term rentals, the owner has nothing to do with it.
Well, I guess then I just asked the pointed question, do we want to add anything in here which would. Require at lea- you know, it can be a private record, but some record of who's been here, or is that something we'd want to let through? Because it sounds like.
I, I think that is a problem and the, the, the key is that, that you say it would be a private record, but there wouldn't necessarily be a private record. I think there's a privacy issue myself.
Right.
There's a pricing issue too.
You know, you bet that, there's, there was something in here where we're going to have some code of conduct or something.
Mm-hmm.
Right, was that?
That was uh, page three. I had highlighted that, yeah, so it's uh, to be determined code of conduct, bullet eleven on page three, shall be developed by the city manager.
Maybe, maybe what we at least can do is in that code of conduct, provide a suggestion to the short-term rental host. That says you ought to collect this stuff. Okay, something goes wrong, this is at least the kind of information you should have. And let, you know, at least we got a shot at it then versus where we are right now.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be good with that. I, I, I think, you know, if we want to reflect that in some language, that'd be good, otherwise uh, you know, hopefully the.
I, that code of conduct is going to be developed at a later date anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah.
The people who are developing it, develop it. Um, it's now twenty after ten and uh, we're moving through it, but um. Our, is, where are we? Did we get past page, page five? Is anybody?
I have a problem on, actually the, the. Last sentence of that and the next sentence of the next page, and that is that.
Which page?
Uh, page five, number nine. Uh. It says, any, it, the last sentence is, any combination of the following requirements within this. Period, twelve consecutive months, and then you turn it over and it says the requirements of fifteen one oh, well, four oh. Only number seven, number eight, and number eleven and number twelve are considered violations. Well, that's, basically that's noise and um. They're just minor violations other than noise.
No, the difference is the, all the first ones are directly uh, able to revoke. And then for those more minor ones, you would need to have three violations to be a revocation. That's, that's the, the system there. If you want to change it.
What is, what is the requirement to get a citation? What, what?
You get a citation from the city. The city, Doug issues a, a citation of the.
What constitute an action that requires a citation to be given? When they. I'm just trying to fi- I mean.
Violation municipal code, so any, any violation of, of this chapter is going to be subject to citation.
Well, it should be uh, one through four, one through nine.
Right.
Well, that's why.
Are already listed, I think there, some are listed above there.
Okay.
Does those are, so for one, one through eight, if, those are, if, um, if, if, if those things happen, then they can revoke or deny it. And then for the other one, and for number nine, the section's listed there, then you need to have three violations. So those are, to drive it to be the more minor things.
So you go out and you have thirty people at your house, they can pull your permit. Or something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but if you just have a noise violation, you got to give three of them.
Yeah.
Do we want to have noise violations as one of those?
Well, I, I guess also.
Seven, if you have more, if you have three noise violations in twelve months, then you're subject to revocation. That's number seven.
And I'm still, I still do want to drill in on how we define that citation slash violation, because um, let's just say some, someone calls in a noise complaint. Um, by the time someone gets out to, you know, witness, there, it might be done. Or is it that, well, I asked them to turn it down, they turned it down, they were pretty cool. By the time I left, it was all good, you know. It's, it, how is that defined? How, what, um, what confidence do we have that we'll, we'll first even know what a violation is?
It's a citation. You have to get a citation from the city and you have a, you have a due process right then to, you know, to challenge a citation as you do any other citation. We couldn't have an ordinance that's just based on someone's complaint because someone can make all complaints. You need to have due process and you're going to be losing your property right to do short-term rental. We need to give them due process, so. You, there's a built-in process by, you know, and it's similar as this dog issues any other administrative citation. He would issue it here and if you get three of them, then. You're.
And in, and in current practice right now, is that citation policy in place currently?
Yeah, that's how citations work, but there's no short-term rental consequence, so you know. If you get cite, you get a citation for a violation of the noise ordinance, you pay two hundred and fifty dollars and that's your citation. It doesn't mean you can't short-term rent anymore. It just means you have to pay the fine.
Well, how does, how is it related to the, the, the actual short-term rental? How does that go again? How does the, the cop know it's a short-term rental or a regular house? With a party?
Yeah, and, and uh, we, we said before, the police are going to be enforcement. I think Bonnie called that out. If police come to enforce, how does Doug verify and therefore issue a violation? They're disconnected.
Let's take the woman who had the, the renters peeing on her front lawn. If I got a video. Okay, that shows these people coming out of the house and peeing on my lawn, by the time somebody gets there. That's going to be over, but I've got evidence that that happened. Does that get me a citation?
Well, let's ask, did she ever get it? Did anybody ever get a citation?
No.
House.
No, not yet.
It's cheap. After all that citations. Well, I, I'll tell you for a fact. Um, the sheriffs will come to your house. And I've had them tell me this, we don't have decimal meters, we can't issue a citation.
That's what I need a decimal meter to, to uh, issue a citation for violation of our noise ordinance and they know that.
Okay, but now I get.
Doug is, this is one of the issues that Doug is working. One of the issues Doug is working closely with the sheriff's department on, um, to get um. Everybody on the same page about what our noise ordinance says and um, how the city wants it enforced. So that, that's in the works.
Okay, will, will, will the sheriff, will the sheriff have a access to the list of licenses?
Yeah, it, once this ordinance goes through, we're going to want to have a sit-down with the sheriff so that they understand this ordinance. Because they're going to be the ones that are going to deal with it after hours, you know. Unless we're going to hire more code enforcement staff directly to deal with these issues on weekends or, or nights, that's another option.
But let's go back to the guy who's peeing on my front lawn. I got a video. I, I saw, I got a video of him coming out of the house. What, does that do anything?
You can present evidence of the violation to uh, to Doug, so, and then he would have the, the option to issue a citation. You would need to be able to show, you know, who these people are that are from the, the short-term rental, I guess, um, from the, the property there.
I'm just trying, I mean, you know, it seems to me.
Same as any other citation, you know, you, you can present evidence, you know, to, to get it issued.
Well, the question would be, is a citation issued to the licensee or the guy peeing on the lawn?
Either would be citable, but um, under the ordinance, the owner is responsible for all violations.
And does policy forty-three apply to these, submitting a video where you've got to then put your name and that's going to be, um, you know, the, the uh. Kind of the, the violator can see that record?
That's our, that, that is our code enforcement policy, so it would apply unless, you know. Doug independently goes there and, and sees it, he gets a call, a complaint, he goes down and sees it himself.
Can, can we, can we exempt? Short-term rental violations from the Think On Your Neighbor law?
Right, uh, yeah.
You can request it, that, that, I mean, the policy for who's not up here, you can request that the council.
We got to get some suggestions here for how we're going to deal with this, if you're having any suggestions.
Well, I, I mean, in terms of like what's written on page five, it, it sounds good. Three citations, you get in trouble, two citations for the others, um, but where do we clarify the enforcement and then clarify, uh. You know, the example that Trevor just brought out.
It really the function of the legislature to, to set the rules and if it's a function of the administration to take care of enforcing the rules, it's not.
Yeah.
You know, there's a limit to how much, th- as legislators, you can, you can. Say, okay, fine, you're going to do this and the color's going to be orange and it's going to be this and the, you know, I. They, they're just different functions within the government. John?
Exactly.
Now, could, could, Trevor, could we put in a sentence here that says. Short-term rental violations are not subject to council policy forty-three.
We, when I reference a policy.
That has a, has exemption for uh, health and safety code, is not covered by that.
You, the way to do it would be to amend policy forty-three rather than put it in the, the, the code.
I don't know where.
Okay, but what if we did put it in the code? Does that cause you a problem?
The, the, I'm just saying this, because you're, you're referencing a policy and poli- it, it would be very confusing to do it. It's easier just to change your policy. You don't even need to have an ordinance. It's much easier to change a policy than it is to change an ordinance.
Why don't we just add a, a, if you, if you, there's three votes to do it, why don't we just add a, a, a line to the resolution that says that the planning commission recommends.
Right.
That policy forty-three be amended to exclude complaints uh, under this chapter. Okay?
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
And there are three votes to do that. I can count, one, two, three. Alright, um, can we move along then?
Good to. Sorry.
No, we're on.
Wait, wait, wait.
Dave's got something. Yeah, I hate to, wh- where is the, there's a provision somewhere about thousand-dollar fines for violations of certain code provisions. Uh, where is that?
It's at the very end. It talks about, um.
Page nine, section seventeen fifty-five one one oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
That's right. What, what's the question, David?
Well, I, I don't want to get philosophical at this hour of the evening, but everything we're doing comes down to how enforcement is handled. And I take your point, Jeff, that we can't legislate that, but that's why the system isn't working now. And I, there are just some very arbitrary things in here about three violations, two violations, a thousand dollars here for this and that. And if we're going to make this whole system work, it has to have ironclad enforcement in teeth and it doesn't. And whether it's the example of peeing on the lawn or this party house that's been going on for two and a half years. The way it actually works is the sheriff shows up, there's huge noise, the sheriff tells people, be quiet, and then he leaves. And they're quiet while he's there and then he leaves. And then it's, then it's, you know, out of control again. And if we're going to do our job, I think we somehow have to. And I, I'm sorry, I don't have specific language other than, you know, should it be two violations instead of three violations? Or should the thousand dollars be, you know, uh, kicked in there earlier and for different kinds of things? I think we should do whatever we can, and you know, we, we're about to lose a huge amount of money with all these homes going out of business because they don't have. People who can live there full-time, but at the same time, we need more code enforcement. Uh, officers to really do the job, because the fact that they can't work at night or they can't go in the home. You know, it's, it's a bit of a farce. We're spending huge amounts of time on what the permits ought to be, but when people go violate this thing. We, we're, you know, sort of powerless. I'm just venting here because I don't have good ideas to fix it. But I think we should make this provision as tough as humanly possible.
So like number, number nine, should that be changed to just two for everything?
Well, I don't know why not.
Yeah, sorry, John.
For that.
I'm for that.
Make a comment here. Uh. And Laguna Beach handles it with this advertising. That's their main way to do it. They, every morning, two compliance officers come in and they sit down at their computer. And they go through the different uh, adverti- uh, different BRBOs and everything else. They don't see a license or they suspect it's not kosher. They call up the number and say, gee, we want to rent your place. Can we drive by and take a look at it? They get the address, they drive over and they hand them a hundred-dollar ticket. Then the next day, they get up, they look up that place, the ad hasn't been changed, they drive over and give them a thousand-dollar ticket. And then every day thereafter, they give them a ticket. And they collect them. Uh, and this is a town that went from mostly rentals to basically none. And within a month, they, they had very little compliance problems because they enforced it. And that's why you're, you're, you're right, that we should probably cut this down, because three is a lot, because you're not going to get busted most of the time.
Right, and do we want to add?
If, if, if that's what we're going about, let's get some suggestions for the grounds for denial of the short-term. Rental, we're fifteen seventeen fifty-five oh three oh, but who was that, David?
Want to change seven and nine just to two violations? Is that?
I, I, I mean, I have any number of suggestions, but I just don't know, you know, how valid or, or. Right now, the thousand-dollar fine is only for violation of seventeen fifty-five uh, twenty A, which is. Uh, you know, no person shall facilitate an offer uh, without a permit, basically. And if you try to offer your thing for the public and you don't have the right to do that, you get fined a thousand dollars. Why shouldn't you get fined a thousand dollars for doing some of these other things? I mean, some of these are just as bad as that, and I, I'm just not sure how the differentiation was made or, you know, is it. Not policy to, you know, have these fines for this kind of thing? Because relying on noise violations and relying on the sheriff who's just got through telling us that they're going to spend less time in Malibu because they're short on power is not going to work.
I totally, I totally agree.
Actually, actually, as it reads right now, as Trevor corrects me. In addition to other penalties and remedies, there are the violations of this chapter. That means violations, all violations of this chapter are subject to the administrative citation provisions of chapter one point one oh, right?
What does that mean? What is that? Getting a fine?
Yeah, yeah. One point one oh is the, is the basic, is the basic fine provision that says that if you violate, you know, anything in the municipal code, this is what you get.
Well, and but that is not, is David, is, does that?
I didn't read it that way, but I see what you're saying.
But does that, is that? I mean, there's a fine for fifty bucks for not getting your permit for your window. Is, 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 are we talking about this thousand-dollar fine or?
Are we talking about the fine that's specified in one point one oh, which is what? Ten thousand dollars a day or something like that?
Thousand.
Thousand a day.
Or half of what the rent is. That's fine if that's in there, is it?
Twice the rent. Twice the daily rent.
That's, yeah, but one, I haven't got a copy of one point one oh, but I can get it.
Well, just in terms of what's written in, um, on page nine, it's saying either a thousand dollars a day or twice the daily rent. Uh, advertised daily rent, whichever is higher, so if someone's.
Is that just for this one violation?
What's that?
I thought David said that was only for advertising.
I got a. Violations of this chapter.
The, the, the way it's set up right now is that you would have the, the standard fine structure for the violations unless you have an unpermitted rental. Then it has the uh, more stringent um, fine structure in there, so.
Yeah, the unpermitted is a thousand bucks, right? Or twice.
You rent with a permit, it's a thousand bucks or, or double the daily rent.
But that's only for offering.
It, and, and.
That's right, and everything else is subject to the normal fine structure of every other violation of the municipal code.
We don't have that.
What is that? So.
One point one oh, look it up, you got the books.
You know what it is, Bonnie? You know what it is, Bonnie?
Hmm, I'll have to look it up.
Yeah.
All, all I'm trying to say is waiting for three violations to accumulate, uh, bef- you know, as, as the remedy that we're relying on here seems to me to be not tough enough.
Let's make it two. You happy with two?
Well, I, I think what Commissioner Wild's point is that should we start issuing a fine on the first violation? You know, if there's a noise violation, validate a complaint and it's, it's a filed violation, that would be a fine, that's what you're saying, right, Commissioner Wild?
Yeah, why not?
It already is a fine, so it, it's, it's.
It's subject to one dot one-oh, not subject to this.
Right, there's two things here, one, how much you pay and when you get it pulled.
Yeah.
Okay, I think two is correct instead.
Yes, do you want to start with whether you guys have consensus to do two violations rather than three for the noise ordinance and the other things, that two strikes, is that which we want?
That's what I want.
I think so.
I would, unless there was some reason why you picked three specifically.
Okay, two sounds good, but, so, but the next question says, other than illegally listing your property, what is the fine if I do the guy's peeing on my lawn? If, what is the fine for catching somebody doing that?
Well, they get one, that would be one of their strikes, right? I mean, one of the.
We have, I think we could, we could put in, Trevor, if I'm wrong, could we put in a minimum fine for violation of the, uh, short-term rental, uh, requirements?
Sure, if you want to, if you want to change the, so the, the, the thousand dollars or double rent is the violation for not getting a permit in illegal listing, so if you want to make a different, if you want to make a different number for what, uh, a, a, a citation would be for other violations, um, you can definitely do that.
Okay, well, I would like to do for the other ones, without taking time studying each one, to make it five hundred dollars or daily rental.
It's fair.
A thousand and twice.
Okay, is that consensus?
I'll buy that.
Yeah.
That's all right.
David?
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
Move on?
Yeah.
Bonnie likes it.
Yep.
Uh, okay, um, anything else then?
I, I, I just wanna, I wanna just, uh, call up maybe what's obvious, but, um, would someone peeing on the lawn, you know, Steve's example, be something which would violate the rules that are listed here, is that something that is cited in one dot one-oh?
Actually, yeah, that, uh, I don't, that would be a, yeah, that's not something that Doug can only cite for things that are in the municipal code and
Right.
public urination, I don't believe is in there, so that would be something the sheriff would have to deal with.
Yeah, but.
So then.
Chris, it would be things like you have more than fifteen, or you don't have your designated guy on site.
So I'm kind of back to where Commissioner Wild is, we, 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 because then all of a sudden, you know, you can have people completely abusive of, you know, tenants completely abusive of the neighbor with no recourse, I mean, other than going through the sheriff, anyway.
We're just.
Well, because, I mean, it is the sheriff's job to deal with the things that are criminal, so Doug would be enforcing things like if the short-term rental operator or short-term rental, uh, property owner is having, you know, everybody park on the street and, uh, so that would be a citation and things like that.
What if we had a bullet seven and a half that says, or any criminal violation by tenants? And then that would cover kind of the blanket statement for that other activity that's not covered by the menel- malve code.
Well, then you're double fine.
You, you, well.
Yeah, because then you'd be.
You made it, you're, 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 you're proposing that there would be a fine imposed on the landlord if, if the person he rents to goes out and commits a crime.
There is, uh, there is that penalty if that person he rents to is disturbing the neighbors with noise, according to this clause, so.
All we're saying, Chris, is we're running a fine for what's in this ordinance. The other, the other criminal activities, peeing on the lawn, uh, is not spelled out in this ordinance, so that's a criminal fine.
You know, now, okay, I'm the, the neighbor, I mean, I gotta figure what kind of a crime I got, who I gotta call.
Exactly, that's where I am, and, and no, sorry, this isn't a violation, they can still pee on your yard, is what we're gonna be telling people, I mean, that's nonsensical.
They call.
So, so you rent, you, you rent your space out and the guy goes out and he, he buys a swimsuit at someplace and he writes a bad check. Your, your, dang, your license is pulled for that?
I, I, all I'm saying, Commissioner Chair Jennings, is that if they are damaging the neighbor and they're breaking law, I just don't know how best to write it, I'm not saying if they're kicking, you know, not, just, you know, writing a bad check, my mistake there. Um, I'm just saying if they, uh, um, are, are injuring, injuring a neighbor by violating law.
But, but what I'm saying is, there is law against that, and there is a fine for that. What we're creating is fines for violating this.
Okay.
Sorry, it's a long way around to get there, Jeff, but where I'm trying to go is this is the only way concretely that we have of making the host owner, whoever it is, look out for what kind of people they're gonna rent their place to. I, I mean, if he writes a bad check, should he be responsible for it? Obviously not, but if he does things while, while he is short-term renting the property, causing disturbance in the neighborhood, I don't mind at all, holding the owner responsible for that, he ought to.
Right.
And if these guys are getting drunk, if they're making noise, if they're peeing on the lawn, holding him responsible or her responsible for that, I don't have any problem with that.
I just don't know how to write it.
Yeah, I don't either.
Well, I g- guess, you know, you could start off by saying that any violation of any, any, uh, civil tort proceeding or, or, uh, criminal law or, well, you know, I mean, I, I just, I don't, I don't see it, I think, actually, amazing, I'm in agreement with John on this, there are other bodies of law that deal with that issue, and, and we're talking about, you know, we set up a set of, of rules here that we expect people to abide by. And if they don't abide by them, then we fine them, or we, we take away their license or whatever. But to carry out vicarious liability on some sense of, of making somebody else uncomfortable, uh, that, that's a bridge too far for me.
But it's a responsibility of that, that host to, to be responsible for that, I, so, I mean, I, I I hear both arguments, I just, I don't, I don't know how we address this, but if we don't put something in here, we're gonna look like idiots ultimately, because there's gonna be all these, well, it's not in our books, uh, you called the sheriff and it's not against that property, they're gonna keep doing it.
Okay, well, you know, we, we could sit here, if you don't know how to write it, then what do you suggest? Because we're gonna be closing in on eleven o'clock real soon, we have to get this done, so.
Trevor, any suggestions on how that could be built in here?
I mean, I, what I'm concerned about is unintended consequences, you know, I mean, there's, I mean, try to think of what, you need, the public urination, you know, that's not even on the property, beyond doing it on a neighbor's property and proving up that those people came from there, I get that one, I don't know what else we'd be trying to target here, because when you say all violations of any code, then we start, I mean, it could be a lot of different things, you know, um, and if there, if, if that violation's happening, usually there's other things that they're doing on the property that are violation of, easier to prove of the code anyway.
Sorry, I wasn't saying all violations of any code, I, just to be clear, I, I'm, things that.
Public urination or the, is, maybe, if you want to add public urination to it, I mean, is there another thing that we're thinking of here?
This is right, one of the, the, every, the big complaint you hear over and over again is the lack of enforcement of some of the stuff on these places, though, you know, the, and, and again, I don't have a better, any better words than David or, you know, Chris has, but boy, there seems to be, we should be able to do something that says, you as a, as a rentor are responsible if this person goes out and causes trouble in your neighborhood, no, 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 you know, I don't know how to write that, but.
I mean, noise is easily what we hear, you know, noise is the violation that we usually get from these places. Uh, you know, there's public urination, the, a new one, we could add that, are there other?
Could we, could we generalize it as something like verified nuisance, uh, nuisance as verified by code enforcement impacting the neighborhood, something like that, which is, you know, not so specific as, uh, certain acts, but just, uh, nuisance impacting others', uh, local neighbors?
Is it possible to do something that says that the person's got a video of this taking place? That can serve as evidence that somebody's doing something wrong, can we do that? I mean, because that, that's the only way you're gonna.
Video, sure like it, but, but you know, what's a nuisance, is, is, is?
Well, at the discretion of the, uh, either the planning director, the city manager, or the code enforcement officer, I mean, it, it's gonna be a discretionary call.
Uh, Commissioner Marks, look at seventeen five-five, oh-one-oh-four. So, you know, that's something that could be used if, you know, the owner, you know, having a bunch of nuisance activities on the site.
Right.
It's sort of a, a catch-all, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a hard thing to sort of capture.
Well, I guess, since we're already using any nuisance activities, can we use that as one of the violations? So if they have two nuisance documented nuisance activities, then they, their, their right to host would be, would be pulled.
Yeah, this is a, uh, these are one of the requirements, so this what you could be cited for this.
Okay, so let's.
Okay.
Yeah, that, four is good.
And that's already, um, that's already listed, um, as they have to comply with all the code above, so, okay, then we'd be covered.
And that's actually, it's, it's listed under, yeah.
Okay, okay, so.
That, that doesn't.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to get on to, uh.
Have we moved it, have we reduced it to two notices we talked about earlier, is that, we've agreed to that, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I have a question on page six, uh, B, multifamily res- rentals, and it mentions condominiums. Okay, and condominiums are a little different than multifamily since they're individually owned, and so, how, are, are we? If you live in a condo, do you get to have two units, or does the whole body get to have two units?
It's, the condos are treated the same as, uh, you have to be primary resident, you can only get a primary resident.
Okay, and why is condo mentioned here?
Where are we looking, do you know what we're talking about?
Section B in parentheses, uh, second line, third line, first word in the third line.
Triflexes condominiums.
Page, page, uh, section seventeen fifty-five.
Multi-family residential buildings containing three or more dwelling units, including but not limited to triflexes, condominiums, stock cooperatives, et cetera, et cetera, may obtain this type of permit, which allows for short-term rental of up to.
Need to eliminate condos, don't we?
What?
It is eliminated, if you, if you keep reading, it's in there. Except that the primary resident owner of a condominium unit may, may obtain this type of permit.
They can get a multifamily permit.
No, because they don't own the whole building. If they own the whole building, then they could get a multifamily permit.
You own all the buildings, you would be, and they're, they're designated condos rather than apartments, if you own them all, then you'd fall into the multifamily, that's how it is, Bonnie, right?
Yes.
So that means, what I'm, what I'm confused is, you got a hundred-unit condo, can that turn into a hundred units of short-term rentals?
If you own a hundred, if a person owns a hundred units and lives in one of them, yeah.
No, can, if I live, if I live in one, I might, I'm unit seven.
And I write that, right.
That is treated as hosted.
If, if there are a hundred different owners and each one's a primary resident of, of that condo, each of them could rent out their unit, right?
I think we should do something about it.
Yeah, they have to live in it, this is what you're talking about, sharing a bedroom, the, they have to be there.
Is that right?
Right, it would have to be a, yeah.
So if you're in a condo, it has to be a primary residence.
Yep, and you gotta be in the, you be on the property, be hosted, so, yeah.
Okay, because that's apparently a big problem with some of the condos, so, that, as long as that's in there.
As long as, yeah, that works.
Okay.
Now, on, on page seven, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines down, it reads, three or more citations, we're gonna make that two, correct?
Uh, which page are you on?
Page seven.
Seven.
Everybody reads it, they go, this is, this is for the, for denial of the permit, if you have two or more vi- citations for violations, we're gonna be two. Is that, is that what everybody wants?
Yep.
Now, now.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good, yes.
Okay, and then, and then at the end.
Wait, 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 sorry, that was a change, number three is changed to more than one citation, is that what the change? Is that correct?
More than two.
No, we agreed earlier, it's two citations, which would be, um.
But, but Trevor's just, Trevor's saying the same thing, he's just saying it as more than one, so more than one is two.
Okay, well, this is more than two, that's why I'm confused.
Yeah, I, I'm changing it to more than two, more than one.
And then, and then I want to.
A three.
And this only applies to the noise ordinance, I'd like to have it applied to one through fourteen. Section seventeen fifty-five point oh-one-oh, four A, one through fourteen, instead of uh, whatever that one noise ordinance section of that. We got all those other violations you can do, we were just talking about violations, this way you can only, it only applies if you make noise. Is that right?
This is the effect of denial of revocation is, is what we're in here, and.
All right, and you could go out and have fifty parties, and you don't get revoked, but if you have two noise violations.
Well, but no, but that violation of section seventeen five-five oh-three-oh, is that a catch-all section?
It is, well, and it has fourteen different things, but it's, it's only, only applies to one of those fourteen.
Okay, so your suggestion is that, that it has to apply for all of, uh, seventeen fifty-five, oh-three-oh.
John, it's already, it's, it's already in there, because.
It's the item before.
E-nine is already the other section that, right, two strikes, so it's already. There's B right there next to it, but that, all those other ones are listed in section seventeen five-nine, so it mirrors that.
This is only the noise ordinance, how does it mirror the rest of it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Number two. And number three is the noise ordinance, and then number two is, uh, all those other violations that we just talked about, that you get two strikes now.
But the B should be removed, is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, I'm confused, but whatever, whatever, if that's right, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right. So I'll tell you what, I'm gonna move the staff recommendation with the changes that have been, uh, proposed, uh, and through the straw vote process that Trevor has recorded.
I, I did want to call something out for a consideration, um, uh, if you don't mind, Chair Jennings, um, just as far as explicitly saying that, you know, parties, events, other commercial uses during that guest stay shall be prohibited, is that something we'd be amenable to at some point in here, as well as, um, you know, rental of the, the unit for, um, any period less than a day, you know, by the hour or something? Um, just at some, at some spot here, just kind of common sense changes, if you'd agree to that.
Well, I think by, it's a brand for less than a day.
Yeah, okay, for less than a day would, uh, I think we'd get, there's three votes for that.
Uh, sorry, what, I want to be clear about what, what, what are we proposing here?
Well, I, I don't know where, where exactly, sorry, I'll try to paraphrase, but, um, I don't know where to put it in the actual writing, but just adding two clauses, one clause, we just agreed, no, um, no duration less than a day, or, you know, uh, no, 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 well, uh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, that you're basically, it's the suggestion that Michael Lustig was making.
Exactly, exactly.
No hotel motel is banned.
Well, and then the other one is just no parties or commercial events, yeah, the, the heat, we could lift the language from the comments that, um, Lustig made as well.
Well, there's, there's a difference between parties and, and, uh, uh, commercial events. If I go to a B and B, uh, for my son's birthday and we have the family over to rent the place, and we have a party, is that a party that's viol- that, that, that shouldn't be permitted? I mean, wh- what are you trying to prohibit here?
Well, wouldn't you, wouldn't that be covered under the fifteen people rule?
Take the fifteen people or fourteen should catch that.
Let's say I've got seven people in my family, is that a party that you want to prohibit?
Yeah, I agree with you on that, uh, that observation, um, maybe then just commercial use.
How about calling it a commercial party?
So, that.
How about commercial use?
Events. By, okay, Bonnie, isn't commercial use covered by, you need a, uh, S U P or whatever you call it?
Uh, yes, we do have a special event permit, uh, law already.
This.
Trevor.
Yeah, so, the, the, the party house, wedding house situation, the way currently, it's dealt with in the special event permitting, John's exactly right. And what it says now is that if you're gonna have more than, if it's commercial and you have fifteen or more people, you're, you're limited to four per year. And if you wanted to change that to zero, you know, that would, you know, that'd be an amendment you would want to, so you could propose that they amend the special event permitting section to prohibit, um, any short-term rental from, uh, from having any, rather than having four.
Is there, are there three? Is there, are there three votes to support?
Bonnie, one question there, uh, would you issue a special permit if they didn't have the parking? Special use permit?
Um, we, for especially then permits, one of the things that we review is parking, and so typically if there's not sufficient onsite parking, then people have to propose a valet plan and rent some space somewhere else to deal with the parking.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm now confused, especially when you throw in your not less than a day, people rent their houses way up, out in, in, in western Malibu for weddings that take half a day, and they have lots of people and there's space for parking, are you prohibiting that?
No, we're talking about, only, only talking about short-term rentals, aren't we?
Correct.
Right.
That's for a day, David, so you understand, that's for a day, you wanna have a party, or you wanna have a wedding, there's not another event that day, you rent it for the whole day, you may not have to use the whole day. But you can, reason for less than a day, quite frankly, is Michael Lustig lives on, on Malibu, uh, Malibu Road, and they had a couple occasions where they were actually lining up the girls, okay? Rent them by the hour, okay? So, that's what he's after there.
Well, I think we need to distinguish, I, I think David, that makes a point, because we need to distinguish between places that we have traditionally allowed photo shoots, you know, uh, weddings, things like the special events.
Well, I, I, I guess the point is, cause those special events would still be allowed, it's just the, like, say a short-term renter couldn't rent a place for a day and, um, you know, simultaneously get a special event or something, or have some other commercial use.
But that's, that, that's exactly what happens, uh, if you, if you're doing a shoot at, at your property, you, you can allow the, uh, the, the, the person who is doing the photographing to come in, rent your property for a day, or whatever, uh, and, uh, um, and then get the special use permit to bring in the crew and all the rest of that stuff.
But they have, they have to follow the film permit requirement.
Exactly.
And all this kind of stuff, the only thing about the day is, there's no reason for people having multiple events in the same day. And as far as.
Wedding chaps do it all the time, I don't know if there's any place.
Under, under short-term rentals, do we want to have wedding chaps?
Right.
Well, I know, but, but I, I don't know, I'm, I'm worried about sticking our thumbs in the things that we really haven't considered, which.
Me too.
Yeah, the duration less than a day could have impact, impacts on the, the film permitting system and other, you know, uh, state, you know, uh, home businesses and things like that too. I, I'm not sure how, I haven't looked into it, I'm not sure how that would, uh.
Trevor, you wouldn't need a license under our codes, you wouldn't need a short-term license to rent your house for a film permit.
Right.
Or, or a special event, okay, that's the difference. There's no reason to be under.
Are we saying, so is, maybe the way to put it is, uh, the short-term rental permit does not authorize use for less than one day, is that?
Exactly.
I'm sure what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay.
And, and you could go and take any house.
So it's just saying that this permit doesn't authorize you to do that, you, you could still, whatever other permits under the code, you can still, still, okay, I get it.
Yeah.
But I, 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 I do just wanna follow up a little bit, Trevor, do, are, are we able to distinguish between short-term rentals as defined in this, in this ordinance, and short-term rentals for photo shoots or weddings or whatever? I mean, are, is, are we gonna run into a situation where somebody says, you, you gotta stop having weddings because, because it's a short-term rental, and it's for less than a day?
Well, one's residential, the other's commercial.
Yeah, it's a, you know, maybe the best way to do it is, I, I, you know, that you recommend staff look at this and the implications of it, and present that to the council about how it interact with the rest of the code, if, if that's what you're looking for. Is it, you're exactly right, Chair Jennings, there could be a lot of different things that.
I, I think the problem is, I, I think we know what we wanna do, but we're just fi- difficulty finding a way to distinguish and draw a line between the things that we don't wanna do and the things we do wanna do. And I think, as far as I'm concerned, I would be happy with the suggestion that, that.
Yes, I second that.
And we, can we do one thing though, say, say, short-term rentals do not alleviate the requirement for other permits required by the code. That would be film permits, special events permits.
That's fair, that's fair, yeah, yeah, that kind of covers like commercial use, yeah, I'm good with it for language like that, I don't know where to put it, but that makes sense.
Well, I think we'll let Trevor put it in that suggestion to the, to the, to the, uh, that's staff advise the city council with regard to that, so anyway, I had a motion that I was making about the staff recommendation, uh, as modified by the decisions we've made here today, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
It's eleven o'clock.
Okay, can I, can I clarify?
Yes, go ahead, Trevor.
I, I already have the interlineated stuff that we did into, uh, the Z T A, I just wanna get through the other recommendations, um, that were gonna be included. We're, uh, not to approve the L C P A, um, recommend policy forty-three be amended to not apply to short-term rentals. And this last one that we're talking about here is, uh, a short-term rental permit. Did have staff look into, um, a, a provision that would provide that a short-term rental permit does not authorize a use that requires some other type of permit or license under the code. Does that accurately reflect the, the three additions besides all the interlineated stuff I already have?
Does it make any sense, I mean, one of the reasons that I, I'm.
I think, just before you, I think the answer is yes, but go ahead, Steve.
The, the, you know, one of the reasons to avoid the T A is because I believe, you know, we've got this ordinance, which has got to go to the coastal commission, the interim ordinance does not go to the coastal commission, and I don't understand why they don't. I mean, there's still no definition of why that's happening. So.
But, and, and we've got that, and it's, it's, you've, you've suggested that, and that's been approved, and that's part of the motion, so we chewed that over, haven't we? Chris?
I, I just, I, I did wanna discuss how we're organizing information on page twelve. Um, if everyone can kind of flip to the page twelve where it's got the uses listed, um, and then, uh, kind of the columns, just hear me out on this, cause it's a little weird, but what the hell. Um, so, you know, we've got the, the, across the top, we got residential, the first five areas, um, from R R to M H. And then we go through the others, what, what I was thinking, instead of saying blanket, short-term rentals are allowed in all these zones, I was thinking, could we put an additional use type as kind of a column at the far right, that's S T R? And then for an operator to begin operating, and this is gonna where it gets a little weird, they would have to come to, um, so, maybe in an, in an administrative permit process to say, yes, we can zone this, um, this given property as a short-term property. Because effectively, we don't open the whole city up to all be, all residential potentially be S T R. We instead say, on a case-by-case basis, we'll evaluate each property. Now, I know that that sounds onerous in the front of this thing, but when I think about kind of impacts to E S O or some of the other things that we're accountable for, you know, are there some properties which really don't lend themselves well to S T Rs? And it gives us the opportunity to evaluate that case by case, instead of opening the whole city up to S T R.
I'll let Trevor, okay, I, I go in on it, but, but there's, there's a prohibition against what's called spot zoning, you can't say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna zone this lot this way, and that lot that way, and that way, over there, you, you, you have to, zones are designed to be contiguous areas of, of, of control. And, and, uh, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be appropriate for, to use that as, as, you know, to say, okay, we're gonna have short-term rental zones, and it's gonna be this property here and that property there, and this other property someplace else.
Yeah, if, if you wanted to, you, you could do an overlay zone, you know, where it's allowed more restrictively or more liberally, you could do things like that. But we wouldn't wanna be designated particular properties as a special zoning. And Bonnie may wanna, I think we're gonna totally rejigger the chart too, it might.
Let me, let me ask the question, I mean, let, let, wait, John, Bonnie, did you have it before he gets going on that, Bonnie?
Um, I was, I was actually trying to read something else while I was half listening, so I'm not sure I understand exactly what you were trying to do, but I, if we, if we had, I think that, um, the whole ordinance is designed to, um, deal with this issue of compatibility with neighborhoods, so, um, I, I don't know how we would, what criteria and stuff we would use to, um, evaluate on a property by, property basis, I mean, it is supposed to be a, um, the vacation rental use is within the context of an existing residence, so it shouldn't affect E S O, it shouldn't affect, you know, anything else coastal resource wise, um, in the, in the city, I mean, cause we're dealing with the neighborhood compatibility impact here.
Yeah, and, 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 I'm, sorry, I'm just gonna clarify, I'm trying to drive this so that we don't kind of have a blanket, um, L C P, which says every property that is residential is subject to this, I was trying to kind of make it so there's more formality in, um, how that's adopted. Now, if it can't be done legally or whatever, I, I get it, but I just wanna throw it as a creative approach to kind of more narrowly define this amendment to the L C P.
If, if also, if you wanna create a, 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 a short-term zone, you're guaranteed a trip to the coastal commission. Um, but secondly, um, you know, there are cities that do that, there are cities that say that, that have overlay districts, uh, and, and so in the downtown areas, you know, we're gonna allow these, or in this commercial area, or in this old historic area, we're going to allow them, things like that, but that's what Bonnie was talking about, about creating overlay districts, that, 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 where you've decided that it's, it's good here, or not, at least not as bad here as it would be someplace else.
I'll just comment on that, that's what Laguna Beach did in the city council, let them, I mean, the coastal commission let them do it. They only can have them in the commercial zones, uh, commercial area, they have a, it's called a commercial area. But, do we even need this taken, aren't we making the point, or do we need to change it? Aren't we making the point to the coastal commission that, yeah, we've had short-term rentals around for a long time, and they haven't been in our code? And now we're, we're regulating them, but they aren't specified as a use. Do we, do we really wanna bring that up? Because these are regulations we can change, this is a municipal code. And, and if you're saying, oh, I'm gonna change my use table, that's different, okay? And why bring it up? We're regulating the use, right now we can say, uh, you can't have a meth lab in your house.
I, I agree with you, I don't think it's necessary to have short-term rentals called out, but you've already got, when you've got a specific ordinance that says what single-family residences can be used, so I think, I, I, I don't think it's necessary, I don't think it does any harm, but I think John's right, that it's not absolutely necessary to call it out.
I like it better to even have it gone, yeah.
I'd like to second it, we're eliminating that section.
I'd, I'd be good with that.
Already not to, to do it was your recommendation, right?
Okay, so can we, can we, uh, one more, Steve, come on.
Okay, Trevor, I mean, one of the reasons we wanted to follow this Santa Monica ordinance is because the Santa Monica ordinance has been tested in court, right? And one, I mean, is there anything that you think we've done with, whatever we've done that would put that in jeopardy in case somebody comes back, Airbnb comes back and tries to sue us?
Well, we're, we're not inoculated, the, and, and what happened in this, in the Santa Monica case was mainly dealing with the platform issues, you know, uh, the platform liability, and what we've done there hews very close to Santa Monica, so we should be, you know, in that same wheel well there, um, and that, that, that's why staff did it that way.
Bonnie, is it? I mean, that was one of the objectives we set out with, so I'm just.
Uh, yeah, but there, there's just no guarantees, I mean, it, it, the law doesn't work that way.
I know, but if something went way up, you know, the bridge with, okay, I'm done.
No, I don't think there's anything else, all right, so can we, um, call the roll?
Uh, I wanna clarify, so we're gonna drop, uh, page nine, the whole section M F, M F C title seven, seventeen appendix one, is that, did we agree to that? Not make those, add those S T R rows?
Yes, I think that's what we talked about, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And we're in agreement on that, yeah, okay, then I'm good, so then, then we got that as another change.
Let's vote, let's go to bed. Kathleen, you still awake?
Um, I am awake, and I would just have one point of clarification, are we bringing this resolution back? Um, or are we just going with incorporating it?
Personally, my preference would be to just send it right on up to the, to the city council, because everybody wants to move this along at warp, warp speed. Trevor, you look like you had your hand up, you're gonna say something?
That's exactly what I wanted to, to clarify, cause there was previous direction, you wanted these things brought back, but we think we have pretty good, clear direction from you, so if you want to just adopt it tonight, we can, um, jiggle this language up, so it can be signed by Chair Jennings.
I, 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 two, two things, first, I think we should be able to do that reading, uh, in our next meeting, but I think more importantly, are we gonna cover exhibit A at all? I mean, we stuck at the L C P A, which we haven't touched, we just jumped right to.
We said we don't, we don't, we don't, we told them not to do it.
And, but, and we're not gonna give any guidance on it either, we're just gonna, okay, okay, then I'm good with that.
Uh, Chris, just so you know, section B is the L C P A, they're supposed to mirror.
Yeah, it's basically.
Don't have to do anything.
Okay, okay.
And, and, and the resolution is gonna be modified with those three additions.
Got it, okay, um, but I, I would prefer if we can see it, uh, personally, but I, I'm, you know, that's.
I wanna move it, I wanna move it, we got an election coming. We gotta get this done, these people are being tortured.
Uh, yeah, okay, so I think we're good, the idea is we're gonna move it on up, uh, without having it be brought back for, for, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then to adopt tonight as the resolution, um, as, with those three additions, I said I think in the other inner lineations, right?
That's right. Okay, so Kathleen.
Um, certainly, uh, Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Quick question, um, will we be distributed a copy of the red lines that Jeff's gonna sign just for our reference, even if we're not gonna vote on it? At the time that that's distributed?
You can, you can get a copy of it after he, after he signs it.
Uh, can we get it before, or no?
That you, no, it's.
No, okay, all right, then, uh, I'll vote yes, but just curious.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Although yes, if I am promised never to see a copy of the red line.
Okay, but you get to, you get to read and, and approve all of the minutes then from now on. Um, okay, so, uh, the, the motion passes, John?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Move your adjourn.
Oh, really, okay, um.
Bring to that.
Second, all in favor, all right?
Hi.
Thanks a lot, guys.
See you.